Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'm gonna call to order the November 14th School Committee meeting. Hello, good evening, everybody, we're gonna get started.
Excuse me, we're gonna get started.
Thanks Ted.
Thank you.
Full house tonight, bear with us. Welcome, everybody, to the November 14th School Committee. At this time, I'll ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Introduction of members.
Ted Novio Millville.
Carrie Goddett Blackstone.
Erin Vinaco Millville.
Matt Catalano Millville.
Chuck Dunton Blackstone.
Tara Scobie Blackstone.
Tara Larkin Millville.
Dan Keev Blackstone.
Joe Spagna, Director of Finance and Operations.
Jill Pillgallerani Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
Maya Gonya Stuko President.
And Jason DeFalco Superintendent.
And next up is an update from the student representatives.
So this year, we have a new block in our schedule called Charger Time, and that has given a lot of opportunities for new clubs, intervention, and for kids to get help with classes they need. And on October 23rd, we even had a pumpkin carving contest held during Charger Time. It was between all of our advisories, and each advisory carved a pumpkin and worked together to do so. All four fall sports have now wrapped up, with the exception of football, which will be playing home on Thanksgiving. For volleyball, they made it to the playoffs, to the Sweet 16, beating Holbrook, but fell to the first seed. Our band went to New Jersey for Nationals, and they had a very tough division this year and placed 7th out of 14th. Winter sports will begin the Monday after Thanksgiving. Our Student Council has lots of updates. Our Stuko recently went to the CDMASC Fall Conference at BVT, and will be going to Winter Retreat and preparing for that in January. Our Stuko is also preparing for our annual Powderpuff Game, which will be held the half-day before Thanksgiving, and will be discussing themes for pep rally in the coming meetings. Our National Honor Society ran a food drive last week, which focused on collecting Thanksgiving food items with the holidays coming up, and all donations went to the Blackstone Food Pantry. NHS is also starting to discuss planning for some exciting events, including our Empty Bowl Dinner in March. BMR also hosted our first intergenerational prom at the high school on Thursday, October 24th, which was chaired by Ms. Conti, and food served at the event was made by Ms. Conti's food for Thought Class, and the event was helped out by National Honor Society and Student Council volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Maya. At this time, due to a scheduling conflict with one of our agenda items, I'd ask for a motion to take the agenda out of order.
So moved.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. We're gonna skip down to School Committee Item D, Blackstone Parks and Recs for waive fees of holiday events. Celeste?
Hi, I submitted a request for our hometown Christmas celebration for December 14th, and I'm here to ask for the fees to be waived. Normally, we've had it at the Blackstone Valley Boys and Girls Club, and they've been really good to us, but this year, we're switching locations.
Any questions or comments from committee members? No?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the fees.
Okay, motion made by Chuck.
Second.
Seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much. And thank you so much for taking me, I'm triple booked tonight, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Celeste. Back to consent to the Agenda A, motion to approve the warrants.
So moved.
Motion made by Carrie.
Second.
Seconded by Tara. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. And acceptance of minutes of October 10th, 2024. Motion by Tara.
Second.
Seconded by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Next up is public forum. Would anybody like to come and address the School Committee this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to School Committee Agenda and what everybody is here for, Student Recognition of MCAS. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. I say this every year, but this is one of my favorite meetings, because we have such a great opportunity to celebrate all of the hard work and effort of our students and how they performed on our MCAS assessment, which is a really big deal, and it's a really important measure. It's not the only measure, but it is an important measure of our students' growth and proficiency. And so, each year, we take the time to invite all of you, our students and their families, who have scored really high, who have done really well, and by that, I mean really at the high, high, meeting expectations or exceeding expectations for English, Math, and Science. And so, each year, this group seems to get bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger, which is a testament to all of the hard work from the individuals sitting in this room, who will get awards this evening, but also to their families and to the educators, who put a lot of time, effort, and energy in to make sure that our students have what they need in school to be successful. So, I'm really proud to sit here tonight and to welcome and to honor all of you. And then, I'm going to ask Dr. Remka to join us to read off the names of our recipients this year. And I know we have quite a few of our staff members here this evening, so thank you so much for being here and for all of your hard work that makes this possible. And then, when Dr. Remka's finished, we'll take some photos, and we will hear from Mrs. Fowless, our principal of our high school. So without further ado, Dr. Remka.
Thank you. I want to thank you, the teachers, for attending. They were voluntary, I mean, they were invited to come and support their students. The first one we have is Lexi Alonso.
Yes, Lexi.
Next one, we have Tiara Cadozo. Tiara Cadozo. And we have Brentlee Chaponi. We have Cole Christie. Cole Christie. Cozy. James Foley. James Foley. Okay. Next one, we have-
Here comes-
Sorry, James, a little slow. You're a little tired today. Next, we have Jack Guto. Jack. James Harvey.
Sorry, sorry if my smile looks-
It looks beautiful.
Yuki. Aria Ingram. Hannah LaPlante. Willow Mag- no. Jack Grootman. Jack Grootman. Okay, Skylar Pereira, I know she's here. Keegan Willa. Keegan Willa. All right, on to 4th grade. There's so many of them, go fast. Sockets Apa. Sockets Apa. Reed Benjamin. Owen Coffey. Owen Coffey. Jackson Ingram. Want to pick you up?
Yeah.
Kaylee Lohman. Kaylee Lohman. Jacob Machado de Souza. Should we do it together? Elijah and Noah Martinelli. And they didn't cheat. No. Kareem Mat- is that PJ Mat- Matel. Helen Waterick. Okay. Tana Saimo. Isabella Varell. Jack Wash.
I didn't see you, Mr. Dijard. There we go.
All right, goodness to get it too. Julie and Lily Wojak. Oh, sorry, no, I know who they are. Jasmine Sinkon. We have Mason Bonad. Mason Bonad. Abby Bouliat. Abby Bouliat. Grayson Copeland. Kylie DiFabio. I'll stay right here. Gabby Kiel. And Anthony Portarella. Benjamin Brier. Kathleen Boulay. Genevieve Bouvier. Kai O'Brien. Ava May Connie. Yes.
Come on, Miss Dick.
Gregory Clark. Masne Diaz. David Dupree. Liam Lequoo. Connor Evans. Cameron Fennell. Elena Gerardo.
Yes, Elena.
Zachary Hundenberg. Jackson Matthews. Matthew Mora. Matthew Mora. Josie Nantes. She coming?
Yeah.
Price Patterson. William Richards.
Hello, William.
Morgan Scott. Morgan Scott. Caleb Scibetta. Kennedy Sowa. Betty Stapleton. Thank you. Congratulations, all.
And if Ms. Fowless wants to join us up front and go through our secondary grade-level award recipients. There you are, Ms. Fowless.
Hello, starting with our former 7th grade and now new to us at the high school, I'd like to recognize Gabriella Santi. She's a trendsetter. Rosalie Brier. We should shift all the little people in front, and now you go to the back. All right, Ivy Maloney. And while you're smiling, Macy Weber. Awesome. No Macy, going once, no sale. All right, from the 8th grade, now 9th graders, Braden Brosnan. Dina Francis Drakeit. Alexia Graham. Caitlin Harper. Joseph Lafayette. Brody Landry. Carter Pacico. Garrett Poznanski.
That's it, the only one.
You're now the favorite. There you go. All right. Now for the big one. We had a very successful year. I am super proud of this group. Reed Blake. Grace Buzzle. We have lots of pictures.
Yes, we do.
Lily Sharet. They're not gonna know what happened when we call them down tomorrow to the office. They're gonna be all freaking out. Liliana Geraldo. Noah Haynes. Noah Haynes. Patience Habed. Christian Lobeser. You know, their parents are probably all at parent-teacher conference right now, so that's why they couldn't be here. Clover Maloney. You had nothing to do with that, I'm just sorry.
What else started?
It all did, it did, it did. Evan Mattson. Nicholas Piscito. James Tebow. All right, I know they're here. Going to brag a little, a perfect score on the math MCAS and a near-perfect score, a perfect score is a 560, and near-perfect score is a 599, because let's be honest, all English teachers are gonna find something wrong. So 559 on the MCAS, Seth Santi. Ariana Dunscombe. Also a 559 on ELA, Martina Fanus. Kylie Fraser. Izzy Goddett. What's about for Dad? Zachary Howell. Caitlin Juba. Rowan Mahan. I wouldn't have put my hair back. Ella McCourt. Also with a, oh, there you are, yay! Also with a near-perfect, and that English, that one little point, Kyla Moore. Caleb Nieberg. Last bragging, and not that anybody, because these were all amazing, but super proud of a perfect score on the math and a 559 on English, Marissa Petterella. Jacob Peterson. Elle O'Reilly. Josh Lyon. Julia St. Gillet. Don Paul here? Amber Whitner. Julia Korenzi. There we go, I thought so. You're welcome. Ethan Corrento. I'm quite a courier. You'll all know why they're getting called down, but they'll be freaking out tomorrow. Congratulations, I'm really proud of you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. As you can tell, it took us about a half hour to get through that. That's a good problem, right? So again, a huge congratulations to our students, our families and our educators. Thank you so much.
Get enough on the other end.
All right, we'll move forward. Next on the agenda is to vote to accept the three Hoyer lifts.
I'll make the motion to accept the three Hoyer lifts.
Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Second by Tara. Mr. Superintendent, a quick explanation on the Hoyer lifts.
Sure. We have some students that may need some assistance for movement and transitioning, so we were very lucky, we would reach out to a company to purchase one, they actually donated them. Were able to go down and see the lifts that they had, and they did donate these lifts to us as a district, it was really nice to have those.
And in your packet, you have a picture of what they are, so in case you're wondering.
Any other discussion on the lifts, accepting the lifts? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, it's unanimous. Next up is Millville Elementary School Water Update. We have the Millville Town Administrator, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Chairwoman of the Board of Selectmen as well.
Yep, Mary Jude Pigsey from MASDEP was able to join as well.
As well.
You don't realize how much you need microphones until you don't have them.
Yeah.
Hand these around, Dan, that's what I handed you earlier. That was a tough act to follow there. Your hands must be sore from signing all of them.
It's a good one.
That's awesome.
All right, everybody has their handouts from the Town Administrator. And I guess we can open this up with, if you'd like to give us an update, or will you?
Sure, over you, sure.
Sure.
So in terms of the new water project, we might put a bit of progress, and actually, I'll skip to the second page. Sorry, I wear readers now, like a... And it says there, you can see that there's a mark there, or Mary Jude, how would you classify this? It's basically saying that there's a million dollars available to the town of Millville to fix the water.
Yeah, I can explain, it's a little bit clunky. The federal government and Iced Taste Environmental Protection Agency awarded Commonwealth a $38 million grant to award to small water systems to address emerging contaminants, which include both manganese and PFAS. We were asked to develop a priority list to submit to EPA as our work plan. So they gave MASDEP the money, MASDEP presented a work plan, Millville was on the work plan for $1 million grant. EPA approved the work plan, sent it back to the state to get all of the grant documents, scopes of work, budgets, put together, and we are working with the town right now to do that. So there's an approved work plan, and there's a budgeted amount for $1 million. I still don't have the big bag of money, but some night I will come here with it.
And, yep, and then if you skip ahead a little bit, there is an email, it's from Peter, and it has a big logo of McClure Engineering, and it's between Sean Nugent and Kara Intenucci. So that is someone from MASDEP working directly with the town of Millville to continue to develop the plan and make sure it meets, you know, all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed. So the fact that MASDEP has been so engaged to move this forward, we're very pleased with. So, and if you look, it says, "Hi Peter, we received from MASDEP with their language to define the scope of work project description to be provided in the application." And then Peter will review it, and then I think the goal is to submit. If I say the end of next week, Peter, would that be correct?
I don't know that, she just got me this. This email came from MASDEP where the gentleman Sean Nugent drafted the scope of work that they've worked together, the operator engineer and MASDEP on the scope of work. And you can read his wording that he provided in this email. And so, from where I sit, it's then, they're working on filling in the blanks on the application, the official application, and I'll be reviewing that to ensure we've covered what I think are all the bases that ought to be covered that the town has discussed with McClure at various meetings, including what this describes is, ultimately, in the details, there'll be planning, there'll be engineering and design, there'll be adopting some new technology on a, you know, it's a pilot test basis, which will take some period of time, and that new technology pulls out the gremlins, the challenge, the continuing filtration and treatment of the water that we face today. So we, as you know, we had a recent quarterly violation notice on one of the test sites that's tested only once a quarter, not every month. And so that just went out last week and was posted last week. So anyway, as part of the project and the million dollars will be this pilot test, that will take some time, it'll be the equipment, this new technology that will pull out the total organic carbons that are the bane of the operators for managing the right levels of chlorine, and also with the pilot test, we'll be able to ensure that the PFAS are addressed going forward, we have a couple of years left to be able to do that, I think three years or more to do that. But the PFAS filtration technologies that are currently available through MASDEP's approval process get all bogged down with this TOC that comes out of the well. So the new technology eliminates the TOC, won't bog down the filtration, will save costs in the long run so far. Sorry to get into so much detail, but it's hard not to. So going forward then, also as part of the grant application will be consideration in the engineering of digging a new well if needed, but also addressing some of the structure of the existing well to ensure that, it's a 1,000-foot well, the water's drawn from 480 feet down, but the top of the well has some concrete encasement and steel, I'm not sure of the material, but they're going to lengthen that or deepen that encasement of the piping of the well further down into the ground. And that may solve the TOC problem, help solve the TOC problem as well. And the fallback is, as we say, a new well, not a guarantee, but the funding will be part of the request for the million bucks included to get a new well, that's, you know, 150 grand roughly to do that. So that's the going forward part. Again, as I say, you saw that we had a quarterly notice violation for the third quarter for the test site that is only tested quarterly, so the math is a little bit awkward because it's only four samples taken in the full year's mathematics that the kind people from DEP make us use. And separately, our most recent test in October dinged above the level, but that goes into the calculation process. So our McClure, who works very well with MASDEP, admittedly finds the treatment of the water challenging, is a nice way to put it. And so they haven't quite found the right, you know, I would say, we're disappointed that they haven't found the right, you know, management of the chlorine versus what's in the water versus what the demand for the water is. And I know that your folks, you know, Scott and team have tried to match, you know, typical demand usage of a full school, but that's sporadic in its demand pull, if you will, on the water, and that alone becomes challenging to manage that water supply with so little usage for a period of time, then a big bump, and then it goes down. So that's the extent of my science tutorial on that tonight, subject to your questions.
So I think kind of the big points are, we're putting in this new technology within the water that is going to take care of the total organic carbons and the PFAS. So regardless of whether we drill a new well or not, that will be taken care of, that technology works in that way. So the second phase is, it'll be like, hey, should we try these things to try to reduce the total organic carbons that come into the system that then go through this new technology? Yes or no? If we did, that would just lessen the burden on the new technology, it doesn't mean that we need to do that so the new technology works. So that's kind of why we're looking, we're making sure there's enough budget in there should we need to do those things. But if we just put in the new technology alone, that will fix the problem. And the other thing I want to mention is because this is new technology, our November 4th meeting, the school committee, the school committee, you're the school committee, the Board of Selectmen did already vote to provide bottled water for the next school year for cooking and drinking, which we have been doing all along, and we would provide that for all of next year with this kind of new technology. Because it is, you know, it's a new try for us, it's a different thing than what we have right now.
Any questions?
And I'd like to, we met with Mary Jude so on the 20th, so I just wanted to read this email, and I have to put on my reading glasses. So it says, this was sent on November 12th. So, "Good afternoon, I apologize for the delay in getting back to you after our conversation on October 29th. I was out of the office last week, but I did ask the Boston office to send you the letter inviting you to apply for the 1 million grant to address PFAS contamination in the public water supply at the elementary school. I was copied on an email dated November 4th, so I hope you also received it, and that's what you have. Just to review the process again, earlier this year, MASDEP submitted a work plan to EPA with cost estimates for high priority projects to address emerging contaminants, PFAS and manganese, including MES. EPA approved the work plan, including the $1 million grant for the town. We have been working with you and your engineer to complete the scope of work and budget forms, so we can submit them to EPA and then award the grant. I think at this point, we're just waiting for the cost breakdown from the town. I was told we can expect that this week. The project will be implemented in two phases. In the short term, the town shall install treatment equipment to address carbon levels in their drinking water while your engineer completes planning and design for replacement water supply well. The second phase will be construction of the replacement well. It is possible, however, that addressing the high levels of carbon may also address the PFAS, so the replacement well may not be necessary. During our call, I reiterated MASDEP's position on the use of the water at the elementary school. As I have stated on multiple occasions, MASDEP has not required bottled water MES for any uses other than drinking water. As long as, example, so not needed for hand washing and dishwashing. As long as the town is providing bottled water, there is no exposure to drinking water that might exceed standards. Nothing in MASDEP's regulation prohibit the school from operating while the town is providing bottled water. My understanding from our conversation is that the town plans to continue to provide bottled water, so there will be no exposure while the work under the grant proceeds. I hope this matches your understanding of what we discussed, especially as to the timing of the grant award. I look forward to receiving the forms, and will ask EPA to expedite its review." And that was from Mary Jude. So, and that, I think that aligns with kind of what I summarized during the bullet points. We'll do the new tech, if it works, great. If it works so well, then we might not need to drill a second water well, they might advise us to do that just for whatever reason, but...
Okay. I was going to say, there's no way that no one has a question. Aaron?
So just to clarify a little deeper. This is a new grant, or this is a grant we were waiting for the bag of money last fall?
Same bag of money.
The same bag of money. So I'm just confused at the order of this letter because it said, "Inviting you to apply for the $1 million grant," but that was done last fall. The work from the town... work from the town applying for, maybe to connect to Uxbridge, right? Is it a different grant?
No, it's the same grant. It's a different project. So we were asked, the regional directors, the four regional directors were asked to prioritize projects in their regions. And I chose Millville.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we put in the plan at the time, which was the interconnection with Uxbridge. We put both Uxbridge and Millville together for that project. Plan went to EPA, came back approved. While we were figuring all of that out, and the cost estimate came in at $5 million, and at the time, we had put the project in for $1 million, worked with Uxbridge, worked with Millville, it just wasn't gonna work for either town. So we kept the same amount of money for each town, but we changed the project. So that's on the work plan now. And what happens is after EPA approves the work plan, then we have these forms that are surprisingly simple for DEP drinking water forms. It's a scope of work and a budget. And now that we have the revised plan, and the town has an engineer who's drawing up the work description and the budget, we need to take that information, put it on the forms, send the forms to the Boston office, they send them to EPA, and then we're done. So it was, it was a timing issue with having switched the strategy. So the applicant, there's really, it's a, it's a scope of work and a budget. It's not like an application for approval because the project's already been approved. The money's already earmarked.
So at the end of your letter, at the end of your email, it says, "Especially the timing of the grant award." So where, what is the timing of that award?
We will get the forms in as soon as humanly possible is what I have been saying. We don't control, once it goes to EPA, they take the scope of work and the budget, they compare it with the work plan that they approved, and then they send it back to us. In the beginning, that was taking about a month, and it would come back. And then Peter's gonna get a stack of paper this high, which is what you need to fill out to get money from the state for free. And that's all set up for his signature already. He's been designated as the responsible official for the town. The approval, the sort of checkbox from EPA now is taking about two months. So again, I really, really want to get this in as quickly as possible. I was on the phone most of yesterday and today with Uxbridge, and I think their paperwork's gonna be better, ready tomorrow. So I wanna.
And just to understand, the, the money that is, the million dollars, is coming through the PFAS issues?
Both P, it's called the Emerging Contaminant Program, Grant Program. So the money that EPA gave to us, we have the money now, the state. It's not, the money's already here. It's just spending it now, is for PFAS and manganese.
PFAS and manganese.
If there were issues with the green sand filters not working, if there were things about manganese, the money could be used for that too.
In the, in the email I just read for Mary Jude, it's the first email in your packet, the sixth line down, it indicates PFAS and manganese in the parentheses.
So, the manganese is our bigger issue, which is bringing us to the chemical contamination. We're putting chemicals in the water now and treating it.
To pull out iron and manganese, that's correct.
Iron and manganese. So PFAS is coming, but we weren't at that, at that level yet.
Well PFAS is here.
It is here. It's in, it, I understand that, but we've been treating water for over 25 years because of iron and manganese?
Yes.
PFAS is going to become a bigger issue if we don't correct it. So the carbon filter is targeting PFAS and manganese?
No. So there, there will continue to be green sand to treat for the manganese. The removal technology, and I don't know what it's called because I haven't seen anything on it yet, but the removal technology will reduce the amount of carbon that's been the reason the manganese, the green sand needs to be primed because the carbon affects the water quality. The, the non-technical term that my water supply staff uses makes it chunky. So there's, there's all of this organic material that needs to come out. In taking that out, it will make the green sand work better and you won't need the chlorine. So that's gonna deal with the disinfection byproducts. At the same time, we think, the engineers at McClure think, and my staff agree, that getting rid of that total organic carbon problem might actually lower the PFAS levels. We don't know. The treatment for PFAS is carbon. So if you have a lot of the gunk coming through from the manganese and the naturally occurring manganese and iron, it could make granular activated carbon treatment that typically would be put on a system, it might make that spoil faster. So treating it upfront with the TOC is gonna help the effectiveness of both the green sand and the GAC, if that's what ends up getting put on for the PFAS. But people seem pretty confident that just getting rid of the carbon in the, in the water is gonna, to almost get you all the way there. So it might not be as complicated as having to have multiple treatment trains. First the TOC, then the green sand, then the PFAS. So it might end up just being the TOC and the green sand, and you might be good to go on the PFAS. But we don't know. And part of this grant will cover the pilot testing to see if this technology works. While at the same time, my understanding is McClure is gonna be doing the design for the new well, just in case. So it won't be a serial, it'll be a parallel.
And just a point, Aaron, on that second page, we've been waiting for the invite to apply for the grant, and that just came November 1st. So that's part of, you know, that's like two years now that we've sort of been talking about it. But there's the official, you're welcome to apply, which means, there it is, earmarked.
But you did a lot last fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and, and that's right. And, and so McClure, you know, it's not that McClure hasn't been getting ready for this, but this is the official notice. Mary Jude's been, have they sent it to you yet? Have they sent it to you yet? And we just got it November 1st, as I say. So that's all a good thing.
So, the trail of my questions, though, I just wanna emphasize that where it says, "Might drill a new well," or I just feel that 25 years plus of water treatment from the town of Millville, if you're going to have, if you're saying it's $150,000 to dig a new well, and you're going to have a million, let's dig a new well. Like that, why wouldn't we start with that instead of band-aiding what we have? I think you said something about.
So there's a difference of opinion between my staff and the town's engineers. And there's been sort of a back and forth with everybody on the town side historically with DEP staff. And I think you've seen some of that in the past. I think we have more confidence in the engineer the town has now than we have had in either of the engineers in the past. And I'm not trying to air dirty laundry. We think the answer is the treatment, not the new well. The engineer for the town believes the new well could be the answer. It makes sense because we've already earmarked the money. If you want me to give the money to somewhere else, I think the town would be very disappointed if I did that. We have the money earmarked. We thought we would actually need more. So the fact that we might have a project that comes in at or under a million dollars, I think is fabulous news.
Including a new well.
Including the new well.
Including the backup, the belt and suspenders. So it may be yes, it may be no. I think there's no problem from the Commonwealth's perspective to go ahead with the treatment and go ahead with the planning and design. Whether you get to the point of actually putting in another well, we're not sure the water quality's gonna be any better in another well. That water is the water, and that water has been bad forever. It's possible, McClure believes they may be able to screen a well in a way that would encounter water with better water quality, and nobody can see underneath the ground, so we don't know. We strongly support the idea, we can't tell the town what to do, but we strongly support the idea of doing it in the order that seems reverse. We don't think you should do the new well first. We think you should do the treatment. It's fast, it's probably gonna work. We don't know. So at the same time, have your plan, design a new well, figure out where to site it. There's like seven different permits it takes to install a new well. Go through all of that process, and we'll see what happens with the new technology. It's better than having this idea fail, and then you have no money. I would never recommend.
There's good water in Millville. I mean, we, we all have wells. So digging and starting fresh, the, the problem that Millville keeps coming up with is the disinfecting byproduct. If you didn't have to put that in the water, you, we wouldn't be battling these numbers every quarter. If you find the good water, then you're just taking out, using a carbon filter and you're eliminating the PFAS. So it's just, it's really hard sometimes to watch the meetings, to listen to the way it's talked about from someone that has lost people to cancers, to hear the disregard for, well, you have to, you have to have this much of it for seven years. I don't wanna see anyone have to prove that. And it's just, it's so disregarded when we could just eliminate the problem and start with clean water. The, the chemicals in the water out of school just don't make sense to me. And maybe they make sense to other people, but.
I don't really understand how it is that you know there's clean water out there and we don't.
I live in Millville and I have a well. I don't, I've had my water tested. I've, Jennifer and I have had a conversation. She's a neighbor to the, the, the school. Her water, I believe, I'm not going to speak for her, but I've, I've asked her, if her water is, and she checked with her husband, they have.
We have had our water tested.
There's good water. There, there's good water. So I, I don't see why it wouldn't be sought out on that property or around that property.
It is. That's part of the plan. That takes longer than getting the treatment on. And so you would choose to wait rather than have a two-part solution. That's where it's confusing me because you can't, can I just finish? You can't see under the ground. If we could see under the ground and say that moving the well 100 feet over would hit a different fracture in the bedrock that would have cleaner well, that would be great. We would do that right now, I assume.
Yes.
With our money, you would do that. But you don't know that. I have a lot of confidence in the people who work in the drinking water program in Mass DEP. They believe it's better to do what you know will work right now with this treatment and pursue the well. And if you get there, then you're gonna spend less money in maintenance, chemicals, and everything going forward with better water quality from that well. But in the meantime, the thing that I think this group has been concerned with the entire time is the health of the people who work in the building and attend school in the building. So to say, let's do something that takes two years to, to develop a well, and let's wait for that time when you could get this technology that does need to be piloted, but I understand you have a vendor standing by.
Yeah.
That's the quick fix. And we have the luxury now of having enough money to do both at the same time, and not to have to do one and then wait to see if it works, and then do the other. So we think it's a solution that makes sense, and the money is tagged for the town. It's been sitting there, tagged for the town for over a year because we had to go back and switch the project. But we did that. And that's all fine. It's all good. I spoke with people today just to make sure. Everything's just waiting for the paperwork at this point.
And we have been providing bottled water to ensure there is no exposure.
We have a couple more, some more questions. And we have Carrie and Chuck. But before I go to them, there's a million dollars allocated, approved by the EPA for the town of Millville.
Yeah.
Permitting a well takes, is a long process, which is in, in the cards, pretend, in the cards. The funding is there for that. In the meanwhile, new technology is being introduced, is my understanding. And please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's right.
That is not currently used in the state of Massachusetts.
Correct.
Which will be, is used in other places, which is gonna be a pilot program that the town of Millville will be, will be the first.
Yes.
In the state of Massachusetts. It's a high likelihood with the engineers and the E, the DEP and EPA that this is going to be successful. And the process for this is much quicker than the permitting process and everything else for a new well. This million-dollar grant, this is not reimbursement, right? This is money that'll be paid for the project.
You can choose.
Oh, you can choose.
You can choose. There are towns coming in with reimbursement projects, but this, this, this project is a payment going forward.
Yeah.
Right. So they don't, we don't have to be held up by town meetings or anything else once the grant is a.
Peter has assured me that he is authorized by the Board of Selectmen to sign to accept money on behalf of the town of Millville.
We voted on that, so yeah.
So theoretically, in a month or two, it's, and I understand the approval process and the paperwork that has to be filled out by the, by the town, by the water guru, Peter over here.
Our boy.
What a boy. So this potential, the process could be underway early, mid-winter.
We hope by early next year. I don't know if you saw, we had McClure Engineering at our meeting on October 21st. And they said, if we get everything, and they're expecting to start work in the first quarter of '25. So I know paperwork can take a little long, but they know that too. Like they've worked with Mass DEP even longer than I have. So they know kind of how that works. So she was expecting the first quarter. It could even, she's like, it could be March, but I am still expecting the first quarter. And then we have the money to spend through March of '28. So we'd have three years to spend all the money. So.
And I would encourage the vendor to get moving on the new source approval process.
Yeah.
I agree.
I mean, if the vendor wants to sell that technology in the Commonwealth, our Boston office is responsible for approving new technologies. And although this is not super different from other technologies, it's just not on the list yet.
Yeah.
So I think the vendor has a, a financial interest in getting his equipment approved quickly through that new source approval.
And just to tag on to that, so although this technology is new in Massachusetts, it's being used in other places for this exact problem. So it's not, we're not, this is not the first time this has ever been used in the history of the United States. This has been used in other states, just not here yet. But Millville will be the pilot study, so we'll actually be on the cutting edge of water treatment in Massachusetts. And I didn't think Millville will be on the cutting edge for many things, but, so it's kind of cool.
I'll go to Carrie next.
Yeah.
And then Chuck, you're right after that.
So, I guess basically my question is, we sit up here to answer to the parents of both towns. And we first told them, "Don't worry, there's an automatic controller coming in. The water will be under control by that."
Yeah.
Then we were told, "Don't worry. Water's gonna be fixed. It's gonna be an Uxbridge tie-in. We're gonna get Millville Elementary back up and running."
Mm-hmm.
Now, we're to tell the parents that there's new technology coming in.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I'm gonna quote Mary Jude, who used the words, "We think it should work. We're pretty confident it should work." But we are still in 2024 talking about safe drinking water at an elementary school. What assurance are we supposed to be giving families that are saying, "I don't want my child in a building where they can't drink the water." They don't want the answer of bottled water. They want it to be safe. What timeline? Like we just keep pushing this out, and now we're under a "we think," and that it should start in roughly two months after the approval process and everything. Like where, where are we in a timeline to tell families that the water will be safe, not we think it will be safe?
We think the new technology will be as effective as the existing technologies. If the new technology, if the pilot shows that it doesn't work, then you would go to a more traditional granular activated carbon system. It's not that there would be no treatment, it just wouldn't be that treatment. So for whatever set of chemical reasons the vendor thinks that this is better than standard GAC, then it's, if it doesn't work, if the pilot doesn't work, you still have the option of maybe there's a new well with better water quality, or you put on standard treatment. The timing depends on when the town gets these forms to us, which I think depends a little bit more information from McClure.
Yes.
You need, you need some budget information.
Yes.
We need to have a budget that's not just a lump sum. We need a description of design, material, you know, we need a little bit of a breakdown for EPA. When we get that, that will go into EPA. I don't control that. That could be a couple of months. I don't know if McClure is working on credit with you guys, waiting to get paid for when the check comes. That, I don't know. But the part about getting the treatment is only gonna be delayed while the vendor goes through the new approval process. Once that's done, anybody could go and buy it and put on a, a water system. So, that's why I said, that's, that's not up to us, that's not up to the town. The vendor needs to go get his technology approved. And I think very financially motivated to do that. So that shouldn't, all of this should be going on all at the same time.
Yeah, I think what I keep getting stuck on, though, are the should. I think what I keep getting stuck on though are the shoulds and the thinks and we're hopefuls to turn around and try to tell that to the parents. Like, I know it's been stated in Board of Select meetings that like, we didn't listen to the scientists, but the scientists are literally saying, we hope right now. And to turn around and tell the parents that that's what we're basing it on is just hope, that's a hard one.
It's, it's, it's not fair to say hope. And if you want me to take the time and go back and write you a letter that uses more legal language, I can do that. But what I'm telling you is I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know how long these things will take because you asked me for a schedule. I don't know what the schedule is. It could go very quickly. The first couple towns that we got approved through the program were approved, rubber stamped in a month. And they were standard GAC technology. Those projects got approved in a month and they were probably installed in a month. It was good to go.
If the new technology were to work the way you're hopeful, it would be, would you be looking at, like, is it a hopeful six months from now? A hopeful 12 months from, or there's just no, it's so too many contingencies to even?
Again, the contingency is getting the technology approved if the town continues to want to use this technology and not standard granular activated carbon. And getting the paperwork to EPA and waiting for EPA to approve it. I have no control over the federal government. I can't tell you if that's going to take one month, two months, three months. I just can't tell you that. I am hopeful, if you let me use that word, I am hopeful that it won't take too long. It's the Commonwealth's money already. So we just need them to say, yes, this is what you told us you were going to do with the money with Millville. You're good to go. It's a transition in administration. Everything at the federal government slows down when there's a transition. So I just don't know. The process of putting the treatment on is pretty straightforward. I don't know how long it will take the vendor to get the approval. All of these things could line up very well. And they might take several months. I just can't tell you that.
Thank you.
But at the same time, and I keep coming to these meetings and saying these words and putting them into email, nobody's drinking the water. And I understand people don't like the prospect of having to rely on bottled water. But the question for Mass DEP in terms of protection of public health is that is the step that we have taken. That no one is drinking the water. And it doesn't really concern us how much that costs the town of Millville. Because that's what we said. And the town has reluctantly complied with that and would have.
Not everyone is reluctant.
No, I mean, but I mean, I had many difficult meetings with the town where prior consultants for the town were saying, well, you're not making anybody else do that. In other parts of the state, they don't do this. And central regions mean to people. This is, this is what we said. And that is why we are okay with waiting to see what happens in all these things. Waiting to see where we're going to get this money from the federal government. Yes, we got the money. I don't have it in the bag yet to bring to you, but every step has been positive. And the interconnection project, we knew it was going to be expensive. Nobody knew it was going to be $5 million. That was a huge disappointment. But I think the town has pivoted. Has, as I said, we like this parallel process. And based on what we know about this new treatment technology, we have every confidence that it's going to be just as effective as the standard technology. And it's not, it's not hard to treat for PFAS. It's, it's like, it's a big, they're 20-foot tall Brita filters.
But we have bigger problems than PFAS, than, than manganese. So.
The, the controlling the carbon will control the need for the chlorine to help the green sand. And it's a better solution than one I was here discussing a long time ago, which was dealing with the Beaver Dam. That was the whole idea, was the same concept was if you get rid of the Beaver Dam, they're going to get rid of the carbon that's clogging up the water. I would rather put my faith in technology to remove the carbon than to have spent the time arguing about the Beaver Dam. We are in a better place than we were.
Chuck?
I would like to say a few words. This is like a informational, you coming to us. But it's your decision, the town of Millville. We don't decide what. You should take the grant and do what you want to do, what you think is best. It's not our decision. We can tell you what we think and we should just keep things as is. And Blackstone is not having any problem with the water. So why don't you guys fix the water, keep the kids, you know, just as is. And when you're ready, you're ready. We're not here to tell you what, which way to go, how to treat the water. You're figuring it out. You got a nice grant. Take it and do the work. I don't know. You're not here asking us to move the kids back into the school. Is that what you're asking us?
I would like to see the kids back in the school.
You're not ready to make that decision yet.
So.
Well, my opinion is that we're not ready to make that decision. But you should definitely take.
Or we're taking the money.
Yeah.
Like that's, that's happening.
Tara?
I just to tag on to that a little bit, I agree. It's up to Millville, the process. I guess just for us is just when we do have, once it's in place, how long will we look at results to know if it worked?
That's why I provide bottled water for the entire next year.
Right.
So we expect the, like I know Mary Jude don't want to give a timeline, but talking with the engineer, like if we can start this in Q1, it takes like a month. So we think like by May 1st, everything should kind of be in place. But even with that, we want to, to make sure that we could test the water and things like that. So we'll provide bottled water for the entire school year next year in compliance with Mass DEP to ensure there's no public health risk as we have been doing.
So I think on our end, it would just getting those results and having to decide what we think based on when you have the results that we can review. Putting the kids back or not, but I agree.
Yeah. I mean, so I'm not a water expert. We're just like, we're just doing what they say. Like, like in the technology, I know Mary Jude's using, maybe not using words as forcefully as I would use because I think, like when we talked with our engineer, and I was like, you know, you hope this works. He goes, they're using this in like eight other places for this exact problem and it solves it. He goes, so why would it not solve it here? He's like, I can't tell you that, but I can't, until we get it here, I can't give you like a guarantee. He's like, I don't want to give you a guarantee. But he's bringing us case studies to look at. And it's like, they're having the same problem you are and it fixed it every single time. So.
That is very promising.
Yeah.
Mr. Superintendent, you have.
Actually, no, everything, everything that I had has been discussed or answered at this point. I was curious about the timeline, the process. We discussed that. Bottled water, you talked about that already. I did have a follow-up question. We, has not been discussed tonight, but I'm curious because I've been watching all the meetings as well. And it sounds, I don't know if it's related, unrelated, but the issue of the coliform in the water, the bacteria that leads to fairly significant intestinal issues.
That was just one, it was.
But could you speak to, because
Oh, Peter knows.
That was something I was really grateful that nobody consumed that or, you know, that water as a result of that bacteria. And I feel like that got a quick gloss.
Yeah, there was a, there was a couple of tests that showed coliform in, you know, a month or so ago. And they discovered that a pump that distributes phosphate, which is used to keep the pH within a certain range, wasn't working properly. So they, they, they have worked to fix that pump to get it back in line. And the most recent testing came in just fine.
I'm, I was unaware that there's a coliform issue. And I don't mean like issue, like problem, meaning that people are talking about coliform. I can tell you, part of, part of my weekend, every weekend is watching systems that have had total coliform detections because it happens all the time. All, every weekend. I have a thing on my phone and I'm waiting on Saturdays because for some reason, water systems test for bacteria on Fridays. And if there's a detection, then they have to retest and they have to call me on Saturday. So total coliform, coliform bacteria are everywhere. They're just everywhere.
Yep.
And if somebody has unclean hands, when they take a water sample and they did not wash their hands, you're going to have bacteria in the water. It's E. coli that makes you sick.
But this came from the pumps you said, right? You said was.
I think so.
It just, it could be anything in the pump.
But it wasn't on it. Somebody's, my point is it wasn't on someone's hand. It was actually in, I want to get, I want to get real clear about that because it was a pump issue.
I think she's saying that coliform would not cause an issue.
No, I understand, but I did some research on it as well.
It's like, it's an indicator that there could be fecal matter. And
That's significant to me.
That's the E. coli, the, the follow-up test. So I, I would absolutely have known whether you had E. coli in the water.
Yes.
Sure, sure.
We would all know.
That shuts you down right away.
Yeah.
But that, that, that was something I thought that would be important to mention because it was discussed at.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a regular.
At your meeting.
Yeah, we're tested just so you know. When you say the water's bad, we're, we're tested for a whole slew of things. And the only issue we seem to recurrently have is the disinfection byproducts that, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, having family members and so forth, but the, the, the metric that these folks provide is the 70-year consumption of, you know, water exceeding the threshold or MCL for 70 years straight, two liters a day. So it's long-term exposure as opposed to any E. coli, you don't want that. You don't want lead and copper. We always do lead and copper. We sent around, you posted a notice. We came in just fine on lead and copper, which used to plague years ago, I guess plagued the plant here at MES. But it's been solved and been quite fine all along. All the taluene, all these other chemicals don't exist. It's just this TOC issue that makes it challenging to manage the chlorine and the disinfection byproducts. And this new technology we're confident, as we say, based on engineers and folks using it elsewhere, will solve that problem. The fallback is, as, as Mary Jude says, is the granular activated carbon. And that, the challenge there for us and why that's less attractive is with TOCs, the TOCs clog the granular activated carbon media. And then you have to change that out. And where you're changing it out with PFAS, it's very expensive. So every time you change it out, it's 25 grand. And nobody's interested in seeing that on the budget line item, that's for sure. So that's kind of where we're at. And the other reason on the pipeline, why we moved from that was the cost and two years ago estimates, assuming no ledge. And I don't know if anybody in Millville thinks there's no ledge because there's ledge. So the cost would be somewhere in the 7 million plus range, we, most likely. And we'd wind up with a, a, a pipe that would have 30,000 gallons of water in it over a 30-day period. So you're really dealing with stale water by the time it gets to the school because it dead ends at the school. So between the cost and the, no, no guarantee that even Uxbridge is going to be able to solve their PFAS and other challenges in this stagnant water. The board decided to go to what we're talking about now, which we call Plan B, and then we changed it to Plan B plus to include the new well.
Yeah, and just to add to that, so for the, the pipeline, once we learned that the water could, would be like the same or potentially worse after spending $7 million, I didn't want to go to Millville taxpayers and said, we just spent seven or eight million dollars and the water is the same or worse. And we have the same problem. I, I didn't feel that would be a good thing to tell people.
Erin?
So I just, I asked about a new well, February of '23.
Yeah.
So that was the first, that would have been the first go-to, in my opinion, anyway. But Mary Jude, just, could you explain to us the grant? Is it a $1 million check to Millville or do they have to submit as they spend? So is the money going to be paid to them and they're going to use it on the trial pieces? The money would be there to build a well or they will need to have that money still available if, if it comes to digging a new well?
It's not contingent. It's just an award of $1 million.
So they'll have $1 million. They, could they buy our bottled water with it in, in the meantime, out of that $1 million bucket?
There are nine categories of expenses that you can have for, for this grant money. And we were not, you don't have those forms, do you, Peter?
I do not. No.
There are some instances in which you can pay for bottled water and I just don't remember what the words are. We can, we haven't put the forms in yet. So we could include bottled water.
So I just, I would rather see it spent on digging a well than, oh shoot, we should have dug a well and now we spent all the money. But that's why I'm asking the question.
That's what I thought you were saying. I think you're saying.
Bottled water.
I don't think we're in danger.
If they spend the money on the, on testing the new system, whatever.
The new tech.
And say, we don't know how much that's going to cost. If it does fail, then where are we at? If there's not enough money left for the well, I think that's what Erin's asking.
A line item for the new well.
It'll be allocated.
Okay. That's it. Going to be included in the budget as well as as much as we can include in there for other stuff, including hopefully multiple, don't tell Mary Jude, multiple years of, you know, media for the filtration.
Yeah, don't tell me that because we can't pay for that.
Whatever we can get away with. And I, I don't say that lightly. I just mean that we maximize
The use.
The use of the million dollars. There's engineering, there's all sorts of stuff going into it.
So I do have some idea of cost. So the new tech, we had an estimate, it's about $10,000. So that was with parts, not all American made. So it means to be all American made, double it, triple it. So then it's $30,000.
It does need to be by American.
It will be by American.
American iron, iron and steel.
So it will, so say that's like $30,000 and then the design and engineering work, we estimated another $50,000. Make the well $200,000 to drill. So between all that, that's still about, what did I just say? 30, 50, 280, so $280,000. And that's leaves us $720,000 left over to try other things. So I feel weird saying this about Millville and money, but I actually don't anticipate us running out of money for this project, even if we have to go Plan A. We have Plan A, Plan B right now. If we have to go C and D and E, we should have enough money.
I think it's going to cost more than you think it's going to cost. I don't think it's going to cost a million dollars.
Yeah. Okay. Well, make it half a million.
Until 2028.
We have till 20, May, March. So basically if we were expecting, like she put Q1 and she said, so assume March of '25, then we have three years to spend. So assume March of '28, based on the estimates from McClure Engineering. And that was at our meeting on the 21st. So you can see her give that kind of rough estimate.
I just have one que, and I know this is more of a Millville issue, but now I'm curious.
Yeah.
The new technology.
Yeah.
Versus the standard technology. Is the new technology an avenue going because you can address the PFAS quicker?
It's mostly for the total organic carbon.
It's, it's because of the water quality.
Yeah.
The nature of the water.
Okay.
So in systems that have more challenging water to treat. And Peter was saying that kind of water quality will clog the carbon more quickly and you'd have to change out the filters. And because the PFAS has to be destroyed in a super hot incinerator, it can only go certain places. Like there's one incinerator in the country that you can take the PFAS media to be burned. Super expensive. So if you can have a technology that is helpful for, for water quality and will not gunk up the, the GAC, it's a better solution. So that's why it's, it's, it's something that has developed. And again, and I know I've said this, Massachusetts is way out in front of the rest of the country in PFAS regulation. So we have seen a lot of things already. And everybody else is catching up. And as more states have to regulate PFAS, especially with the new EPA rule, everybody's coming to the party because everybody wants to make money on this. So there will be more and more technology available. People are working really hard to bring the cost of disposal down, different technologies to get rid of the PFAS in, in soil, in the media from the water treatment, in wastewater, sludge, all different kinds of things. It's a, it's a good technology to invest in, I would think.
And actually you just reminded me of something. I think one of the key use cases of why this is considered like new and not used is they typically use this technology for surface water. Because that's where you see this level of organic, total organic carbons. The fact that we're getting this kind of water from below the surface is very different. So, and that's what's been the problem the whole time. I have a minor in water quality now on my degree, so.
So the differences from where we were last year at this point?
Yeah.
You have the money.
We have the money. We have a plan and we have a vendor who can, we can buy this from. We have the technology that, like, it's all kind of just within spitting distance.
And we're working very closely. And we're working very closely with DEP, as is our engineer operator, so that's a critical part of the process to have folks working together. So DEP staff have been very helpful to McClure in working through what the right path to go down here for the town of Millville. So they're on our team, is how I've been, that witness Mary Jude is here with us tonight.
Right, so there was three points I was going to make for the difference. You have the money, that's big.
Yep.
I understand the plan has to change because it's not feasible to come through Uxbridge. Especially for one building. Even at $7 million. For one building without a loop to connect to other.
Yeah.
My point, my second point was to have a water operator that's stable.
Yes.
You have some stability with. And that, I think DEP.
And they, Mass D.P. likes them, that's really the big, a big difference.
I was going to say diplomatically, they can work with Mass D.P.
Oh, we can just speak plainly.
And thirdly, even the bottled water was an issue with the Millville last year, like.
We've been buying it the whole time.
Well, I, I, I guess what you would, I would argue what constitutes the whole time, so.
Well, at least the last year, it has been 100%, this last school year.
Last school year, yes, at the beginning of the, but there was debate. I mean, there was debate even up to your town, going into your town meeting. And by the way, for the record, the chairwoman has been in support of the bottled water the entire time.
That's right.
Yes, she has.
Yes.
I'm not a troublemaker, I just want to get this resolved.
I was pointing out that, someone may not have.
Somebody might.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'll ask, like, in a, in a perfect world, say all this is, all the funding, the planning and everything, say just by March.
Yeah.
Or April.
Yeah, be great.
As far as the implementation of the new, or installation of the new technology, how long is that process? Once it's, like, if everything's good, what is that, a month or two months, or?
See, I, I don't, I don't know what this technology is. I can tell you, a, a town that we've been dealing with, with installing PFAS treatment, they were piloting it, and much, it's a town system, so it's large. They had to run their well full force, I think, for five days.
Okay.
In order to really test the carbon, to, to see how it was going to come out, and then, and then you sample the water, and you see. And I don't know whether they'll be making tweaks or not making tweaks, but that was just happening two weeks ago. So that was a, a very, very long pump test. But that doesn't mean like months, it's, it's.
And that's a town's water system.
It's a number of days.
Not as one building.
Yeah, and I don't know if you'd be doing like a 48-hour, I, I just don't know enough about this.
I mean, we have the time. You could do five days.
But it's a teeny tiny amount of water.
I know.
But that, I, I don't know, but the, the process for getting the new source approval, the new technology review in Boston is, is a paperwork thing. That doesn't require pumping water. They're going to come in with whatever their portfolio is that they showed you, and say, you know, this works in New Jersey, it should work in Massachusetts, and those people will approve it. Will it work on your water is what requires the pilot. And they'll see.
Okay.
And it's.
Mr. Superintendent? Yeah, I do, I just have a follow-up question, something I'm curious about, Peter, you had mentioned earlier, and, and Mary Jude, you were quick to comment on this too, that the total, the total organic carbons, you had said come from, most often, surface water. You said in this case, our well, it comes from the water that's coming from the ground. But earlier in the discussion, and I just want to make sure I understand the, kind of the science behind this, earlier in discussion, you mentioned the need. It, it sounded like you were describing almost like a cement lining in the well, did I understand that right?
Like around the pipe that drills, yeah.
Okay, and needing to extend.
Go deeper.
Go deeper.
Yes.
Can you just share a little bit about the why, if we're not concerned about the surface water?
Nobody can tell us, yeah, nobody can tell us why a, the bedrock well is coming up with so much TOC. And as McClure describes it, it's the TOC like you'd see in a surface well, okay? So we don't know if organic comp, you know, carbons are getting down the well itself, down the pipe that goes down into the ground. And there, I don't know that, you know, what, how that structure works, but one of the quick solutions that has been suggested by Chris McClure, the engineer, was to go deeper with the encasement of the piping that goes down into the ground. Maybe, maybe partial solution to the TOCs, but he, he can't say for sure. He's, he's mystified as to how, well, how we're seeing so much TOC, but it's there.
We're confident it's not from the standing water that busts the well. We don't think it's from that.
We know that it's not. There's, there's a test that you do, it's, it's an unfortunate term that we use, but if it's groundwater under the influence of surface water, so if it's under the influence, then you would say it needs to have the same level of treatment that surface water does. You might be a groundwater system, but we're going to make you do a huge amount of treatment, which is what is required for surface water systems, in part because of bacteria. There's this task called the Microscopic Particulate Analysis Test, the MPA test that we, that had to be done. And the MPA test did not show any influence from the surface water into that well. The well is screened, you put the thing down, the casing into the ground, and then it's, it's, it's screened at the place in the bedrock where the fractures are that yield the most water, and that's where the water comes in. And somehow, 1,000 feet down, where this well is screened, there is water that looks like surface water. And that's been the problem all along. The whole idea about the beavers, that was, DEP never thought that was a beaver problem, because we had already looked at the whole surface water issue. So, nobody knows, and I don't think it's worth spending money trying to do another science experiment to figure that out. I think we should just fix the water.
So what is the estimated cost of the casing?
We haven't seen that yet, but it's not, you know, it's not significant, it will be part of the million dollars, right?
That's part of the grant.
Promise me that if it's $100,000, that you're not going to do it, and you're just going to dig a new well? Because that would be half of what the cost of a new well to encase an old well that is causing.
Yeah, I have no, I have no impression that it's going to be very significant in cost.
So.
Understand.
Yeah, I guess, like, we're listening to the people who do this for their jobs, so.
But it is known that somewhere down in that well, there is the look of the surface water.
Yes.
Again, moving to the other side of the building, or behind the building, starting fresh might not work.
And that's part of B, Plan B+.
Yeah.
It's in your court.
Yep.
It's all on your court. Anybody else?
Do y'all feel smarter on water? You should, the particulate test that I always like.
These are easy meetings, because you guys have heard this so many times now. I can throw around all the acronyms I need to, it's just.
What is the particulate test called, Ian?
Microscopic particulate.
Yeah, we were certainly disappointed to have a, a ding in the third quarter there.
Okay.
I was disappointed.
Any other questions? Chemistry?
You know how to reach us.
Precipitits?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Erin.
What, just tell us what the vote was for providing water.
I think it was.
I'm going to guess four to one.
You what? No, 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 not who voted.
I don't remember.
What are you supplying? No, I don't want to know.
What do you mean?
What was voted for, what was voted on?
Oh, to provide bottled water for cooking and drinking for the entirety of the school year.
Provided students are there.
Provides students are in the building.
So, 25, 26?
25, 26, yes, and I just said 20, I said 25, 26.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and I think we only have four people.
Cooking and drinking.
Cooking and drinking, yeah, whatever Mass D.P. has instructed us to do, that we will continue that for the entire school year. And I think we're going to be doing, and that's even if the new technology is in there and it's showing the water is okay, just because we want to make sure it works. Now, I feel very confident that's going to work, because like I said, I can't imagine, like, they're using it for water that looks just like ours in other states. So, it seems odd that the, I don't know how to say it's not going to work here when it's working on water that looks exactly the same, just in New Jersey.
You good?
I'm good.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Do you have an ask of us?
Yeah, well, no, I just, I'm just going to come right out with this. And, and Mr. Superintendent, you can clarify if I'm, if I'm wrong about the way it works, but and I know you're not, there's no ask tonight to, well, you kind of did, but to move the kids back to Millville. But with that being said, you have a different approach, different plan. Some things have improved and some things have gotten worse, you know, but you're recognizing of that, of, of, from last year. We have, if we are moving anybody, which is not really tonight's discussion, there has to be a hearing in December.
If we're doing it under a grade reconfiguration model.
Okay.
If we're moving based on emergency provisions, which we moved initially, we can move them whenever we need to. So if the school committee decided in January, in February, that you wanted to move the kids back to Millville, under the provision that you moved them out of Millville on, you can move them back.
We don't need a publication for that.
Not for that.
Okay, so we're not locked in?
No, not for that.
Okay, that's, the only thing I was concerned about is if you're making progress and you're like, there are obviously issues you're addressing. The tie-in to Uxbridge, which probably would have taken a lot of money, but several years as well.
And not necessarily worked.
And not necessarily.
I would have to move.
Yeah.
After I spent $8 million and it didn't work.
There's no guarantee that any of it's going to work, but you, you work with the best information you have, so. Okay, so we're.
But, but if I could, not to be.
Sure.
Oh, you're going to be difficult, Peter.
Not to be difficult, no, just, the town does have a different view of what Jason just described. I'm not saying that the town has a problem necessarily, but you might want to ask for an extension of that provision in the regional agreement for moving kids back and forth. If you recall the letter from the lawyer way back when, he cited that, you know, and, and that's why I'm saying the town, he cited that we thought you were in violation of the regional agreement on that decision you made. I understand exactly how you view it, but again, the town, based on that letter way back when,
Yep.
suggests other, you know, that the town has a different viewpoint.
We'll vote for an extension either way.
And so I think that, that's right, they might, like, we have on their Monday night agenda a wrap-up of, you know, just an update on this meeting, and might ask them to provide an extension anyway on that. That's just from Millville. You know, Blacks don't make side on your, your interpretation of things.
The school committee attorney.
Yeah.
You got her response.
I understand, yes.
She completely disagreed with your attorneys.
That's right.
Yeah, so there we are with.
There we are, that's right. So I'm just saying, it might, just as insurance, to have the extension, keep everybody happy, but I, I frankly don't know that the, and I'm not speaking for the board of selectmen, but.
I don't anticipate it being an issue.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
We did it last year.
Right, I, I get it, but you were referencing your attorney's.
Yes.
Opinion, which we.
And last year's extension was, was significantly different. That was a restructuring of the entire school system, right?
I totally agree with you on that.
That was not.
So we were very helpful.
Oh, yes, without question.
And we, and Millville did that first.
Yes, you did. We took advantage of your generosity.
Yes.
That was very helpful.
And so, good.
I don't know if that's necessary.
It's not, and now that I'm talking it through, it's not, it's not necessary, because actually, we're operating under that right now, that we can, it's still MES at, at the complex right now, so we can.
I get it.
Yeah, so we're not locked in.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, I just was. Yeah.
I, I think we could vote the next April or May, as, as long as we have the time to move them. We're not going to move them.
In April or May.
In April or May, so we set it up for the summer, and that gives them time to.
That's right.
Give us results.
And to your point, I was making that clear, that I was a little bit confused, but that's because of the grade reconfiguration as well. I just didn't want to handcuff us, or, or, you know, so that they could make significant process, progress, and we would have the opportunity.
Everybody wins if you, we get to that point, and whatever the date is, yes.
That was, that's, that was the only, everything else seems to be moving along very well, and I thank you.
We were happy to get the email that's with the million dollars. I remember, so when we met, we asked with Dan on Tuesday, said, "We asked me on water," and then I guess Dr. Falco, you asked him too, he's like, "Is something going on?" I said, "Yeah, we get this email."
Yeah.
It says we get a million dollars. So no one was in trouble. It was like good news.
Yeah, right, and the million dollars is there, it's in the state's hands, now it's to, to, and, and Mary Jude put you guys.
Mary Jude's the million dollar.
On top of the list.
Dollar woman.
Woman, there you go.
Ben Sherman in Uxbridge was very happy today.
Good.
How much they get?
Doesn't matter, Dan.
But the million dollars is enough for our project, so.
They have a bigger project.
I'm sure they do.
It's huge.
Their project was $14.9 million plus $100,000, and now they think another 19 million.
I had bigger water issues.
There's no guarantees that they'll fix the problem.
Yeah, yeah. Let's not tie into that.
No, exactly. I, I would really, I would fear for my life.
They're building a whole, big treatment plant. They are not getting anything close to whatever.
So we feel very lucky to get the amount that we're getting to, which will cover.
Just keep in mind, we got $38 million for the whole state. Millville's getting a million dollars of that.
That's great. Thank you.
This is a really important project, because it's school.
Yeah, thank you.
And it's not, it's not a whole town. I mean, this was a push.
That's right.
And the fraction of, of all their 1,400 and some public water systems in the Commonwealth, I'm not sure how many actually qualified as small for this grant program, but still.
Getting a lot.
Yeah, we feel very lucky, thank you. Very fortunate.
I'm, I'm happy to bring it.
360, is it cities and towns?
351 cities and towns.
51 in Millville, gets a, a million, million dollars out of the 38 million, so.
We feel very lucky, very fortunate.
We want, we want this to succeed very much.
Yes.
Because I told everybody this was going to work, and it was important, and put it on the top of the list.
Yeah, win-win.
So don't make me get fired. Close enough to retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Thank you for putting us early in the agenda.
Okay. Moving on to Millville, sorry, update on MCAS mass conference.
Yes, I can do this quickly. I just wanted to share with the committee, as I know we had discussed our presence at the MAS-C, MAS-S conference. And so I did attend Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. The conference started at noon on Wednesday, and it was packed. There were hundreds and hundreds of school committee members and superintendents there. There were lots of vendors, lots of really interesting information, lots of great breakout sessions. Just a few quick highlights that I attended for us was the addressing unique challenges of regional school systems. That was really, was, was, was great. It was a lot about the fiscal challenges that we're facing, and a lot of the work that's being done by the Regional School Association to help address some of those challenges, of which we are part of. Joe, Jill, and myself have been attending those meetings. So was happy to, to know that we are plugged into that work that is really advocate, advocating, excuse me, and lobbying for more resources to regional school systems. Attended a really great session, and I'll just highlight a couple of quick things. Attended a really great session on school building projects, and had an opportunity to meet with a pretty unique design and engineering architecture firm that is doing some pretty innovative school building work in the K-12 space, both internationally, but also locally. They highlighted a few schools, in particular, in Cranston, which were really pretty creative in terms of their design. They were elementary schools, but saw some just incredible international schools, and looking at different models and ideas to bring back to our school building committee. So definitely some good things locally that we can go see, but some also, you know, some inspirational kinds of things to look at as well. Spent a great session for Design for a School Committee and district leadership around current legal issues that are facing school districts, and have the legal briefs on that as well, if anybody's interested in those. Also went to a negotiation session. Will, on Monday evening, with the Unit A team, will go through a bunch of the kind of highlights and information from that session as well. And had an opportunity to sit in a, it was a, it was a very intense, I guess, keynote speaker, Tim Schreiber, who spoke a lot about disagreeing with dignity and the way to do that, in a room of 400 people the day after the election. That didn't land well, but that's okay. I actually think it was really, it was actually really impactful. And it drew up quite a. I actually think it was really, it was actually really impactful, and it drew up quite a divide in the room, with hundreds of people there, everybody feeling, you know, their own way about the outcome. So I actually thought it was a great opportunity for the presenter to practice what he was preaching, which was how do you disagree with dignity, in a room full of individuals that were feeling, you know, mixed emotions. So it was really great to be able to attend those sessions. And then the last Friday afternoon, I presented on a panel with the superintendent from Hope Dale in Millbury, and the discussion was superintendents and school committees working together through, you know, challenging situations and doing so successfully. So it was honored, we were asked to present on that panel, so that was great, and had a chance to really share just the great work that the school committee has done in partnership with the leadership, so that idea of governance and leadership coming together to work through tough stuff, in, you know, the name of trying to support all students. So it was a great conference, and appreciated the opportunity to attend on behalf of our district.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next is MSBA update.
So, quick headlines. We have received three submissions for our designer. The designer selection committee for the school building committee is myself, Carrie, and Jane Reggio. We met with the OPM colliers just to, just do kind of some high-level overviews of the selection process, and we had a school building meeting this evening where we went through some of the next steps of the school building committee. Those next steps are, because we had three and three-only submissions, we had fifteen interested individuals or firms or consultants that attended the walkthrough of the high school, but we ended up with three applications, which is okay. There are various reasons that the OPM feels that we landed there. So we'll submit to the MSBA before Thanksgiving, you know, our rationale behind the three submissions that we received and why we received the three. So we'll submit that. We will be meeting with the MSBA on December third at 9:30. The "we" is again Carrie, Jane Reggio, myself, to talk through the three proposals that we received with MSBA. And then on December seventeenth, we will interview the three firms. At the conclusion of the interviews, Jane, Carrie, and myself will put forward essentially our scoring on the rubric that were provided by the MSBA, based on how the questions were answered, and we will advocate very strongly for the designer that we feel would bring the best plan forward in the feasibility study for the project. Assuming the MSBA lands in the same place, there are kind of them, there are three of us, it's pretty straight math, ten beats three, but we hope that we will be as convincing and as forceful as we have been with other things, and are known to be with, you know, work that needs to get done, we'll get the designer we want for the project. Assuming we do, we will then, between Christmas and New Year's, I will be negotiating a contract with the designer, with the designer firm. We have a budget of about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars left in the overall budget for the feasibility study, that I'll be using to negotiate that contract. On December thirtieth, we will have a school building committee meeting, where my hope is the school building committee will be happy with the contract negotiated and will give me the authority to sign the contract on behalf of the school building committee to enter into that phase of the work. So that would actually conclude the designer and OPM selection process in its entirety. So we will have the full team to start the feasibility study. So all things go as planned, we hope by the end of '24, we not only have our OPM, which we have, but we will also have a designer, and we're off to the races. Carrie, did I miss anything in that?
That I can think of?
Good.
Good, yeah.
Good. Well, thank you for that update.
Yep.
Next, Erin, you taking this one, Superintendent Evaluation for '23-'24 School Year.
I will also be quick with this. Thank you for everyone that submitted their feedback. Everyone has a copy of exactly what was submitted. So just briefly, because we do have to do this in public, finish the evaluation for Jason for the '23-'24 School Year. All of his focus standards came in as proficient. It was just asked if anyone left lower than proficient rating, that there was a comment with it, just so Jason had the feedback. And then moving on to his goals. Student learning goal noted as some progress. I just don't want to miss one, because the pages aren't... And again, the comments are there. If it was less than met, it was asked that you leave a comment, and those are there. Jason has a copy and for you guys to read through. Professional practice goal, building capacity and deeper learning is met. The district goal, better together strengthening our systems, is met. District goal, where all are welcome and belong, health and wellness, is met. District goal, facilities creating spaces to maximize learning, is met. And that is a continuous goal for many reasons, as we just discussed, MSBA. There it is. So I think we're going to meet at a later date to discuss Jason's contract and move forward into next year's goals, which he already presented to us at last meeting. I think you have an update on here, too, for... Great. Any questions?
No questions, Brian? Ellen, thank you for this undertaking, for some of that on time.
Always my pleasure to work with Jason on this.
And Jason, thank you to the committee for the feedback. You know that I take that very seriously and are already looking for ways to incorporate some of that into the work we're doing. Some of it's actually, we have already incorporated in, which I'm really excited about. Actually, our Director of Athletics and Student Life is here tonight to give a sports update, but she will be launching our first girls' leadership, women's leadership group.
Which was from the feedback, yeah?
Yeah. So please know I take your feedback very seriously and do act to respond to it right away, so we're excited about that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Twenty-four, twenty-five student improvement plans and professional data plans.
So just from the last meeting, items H and I, we just need the school committee to approve them. Okay, so yeah, they were all presented at the last meeting, we just didn't approve them, so it's just a housekeeping thing.
Oh, correct.
Yep. You don't have to sit through those presentations again.
Thank you.
So can we do one?
We'll do one at a time, yeah.
One at a time?
Yeah, sure.
So motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five student improvement plans and professional data plans.
Motion by Carrie. Second. Second by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next will be the Superintendent District Goals.
Motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five Superintendent and District Goals.
Motion made by Carrie, seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Washington DC Field Trip.
Yes, so Ms. Fallis, it was getting late, so she has, I told her it was fine to go. So if you have specific questions, I certainly will make sure that we get the answers back to the committee. But every year, this comes before the committee, it's pretty straightforward. In your packet, you have the field trip request for the grade eight students to attend the Washington DC annual trip in June. There is a proposed itinerary attached. We did look at flights to see if we could maximize more time for our students in DC. It doubled the cost. The trip went from eight hundred to sixteen hundred. So we just felt like that was a lot for families to take on. I questioned the cost being so much higher, but with the shuttle...
Was that through the company?
Yes.
The Capital Tours?
So...
I would never pay eight hundred dollars to fly to DC.
No, I know.
So, yes.
Absolutely.
So it's still, unfortunately, a bus trip for this year at the cost of eight hundred dollars a student.
I honestly think that's pretty expensive for a bus, a two-night bus trip. That's two nights in a hotel, right? They're leaving on a Monday, coming home on a Wednesday?
Yep. Monday morning to Wednesday night.
And all of their activities are free?
But the students can fundraise, don't they?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be different this year.
I'm just saying that what they do there is, the monuments, the museums are at no cost.
Yeah, I think this is the same firm we used last year, the Capital Tours.
They don't ever do like that dinner dance or...
They did it...
They're going to do it Aaron's for.
They don't even...
Aaron's going to take them on the tour.
Me.
You.
I'll have a man do it.
Say, sign her up.
Oh, she'll be home, sorry. It's June.
She'll go back.
Oh, actually, according to her, she's living there. Is it four people per room? At the comfort, is it four students in a room?
I don't know. That I'm not sure.
Most likely, that's what it's been in the past.
I don't think they, the way that Jill and I discussed it was, there were zero changes from last year's models to this year's.
Is she going?
I don't know.
There's a question.
Producer Jill does no at the parent meeting.
Oh, really?
She would not be attending for the millionth time.
So who are the chaperones? Are they teachers or are they parents?
I don't know. I don't have any of those answers, but I can find out. Kids to a room and chaperones. I'm happy to do that. It's just this, kind of the standard trip that they take, you know, each June.
So you're looking for a motion to approve it?
Yeah, we just want to get the information out to families so they can start.
Yep, I'll make a motion.
Made by Sarah.
Second.
Taken by Carrie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Report of the Superintendent for the Mayor's Athletics Update.
Yes. Darlene, if you want to join us at the front, and thanks for being here, and thanks for your patience. You probably learned a lot about athletics.
They did.
You thought it was just hydration for the athletes.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
So I just have a quick summary of the fall season, and then I'll go over some upcoming winter stuff as well. There wasn't a great history of registrations from last year, so I can only provide what we had for this year. So for the fall season, for girls' soccer, middle school and high school combined, we had forty-six registrations. For boys' soccer, we had forty-three. Football, thirty-four. Cheer, forty-eight. That's what the middle school and high school combined. Cross-country, we had twenty-two, which is pretty significant, from what I heard, cross-country was really small last year. The majority of the numbers for cross-country are at the middle school level, so we still need to build the high school numbers. For volleyball, for JV and varsity, we had thirty-four, and field hockey, we had nineteen with the JV and varsity teams. Some quick highlights, the cheer team competed at their league championship last weekend and advanced to the regional cheer competition, which will be held at Marlboro High School this Sunday. Girls' varsity soccer had a great season, they just missed playoffs by one team, they were ranked thirty-three, the top thirty-two advanced to the playoffs. Varsity volleyball, they went to the playoffs, they were ranked sixteen. They had a really great win against Holbrook in round thirty-two, and then they moved forward to the Sweet Sixteen and lost to the number one ranked seed, Borne, but they had a great season. I sent an end-of-season survey to all the student athletes from the fall, so as of today, everyone should have received it. That's going to help with some of the postseason evaluations for all the coaches, which will be taking place next week. And then out of the athletic fees, there's still thirty-one students that still have not paid, or families that still have not paid their athletic user fee. There's been like weekly communication, direct phone calls between myself and Kathy Stearman. And basically, our plan is that no one that has an outstanding balance will be able to participate or try out in winter sports until it's resolved. Yes, that will mean they'll have to pay the winter sport fee and the fall sport fee at the same time, but we gave them the full fall season to resolve it. Moving on to winter season, we don't have any more coach vacancies. I'll be finalizing the coach appointments probably tomorrow. The Athletics Advisory Committee was involved in reviewing applicants for this year. We have open gym, so I started open gym a couple of weeks ago for basketball. It runs every week, five to seven PM, Tuesdays through Thursdays. So Tuesdays, it's just for girls, grade six through twelve. Wednesdays, boys, grade six through twelve, and then Thursday is just the high school and it's co-ed. Registration was open for winter sports October second, and it will close December sixth, which is the first week of practices and tryouts. So tryouts will start as early as December second. Athletic fees will be due that week as well, so athletic fees will be due December sixth. Again, their students won't be able to participate or do anything winter sport-related until that athletic fee is paid. We have an open house for winter sports next Friday, November twenty-second, six-thirty to eight-thirty PM. I'll give a presentation, just general basics about the athletics program, my expectations, what sports we're offering specifically for each grade. We'll have a breakout session for coaches, where students can meet each coach, and then we'll have a help session for registration, especially for the English language learners. And then we can resolve any athletic fee issues. Kathy Stearman's going to attend as well, so if anyone has a question about that, she'll be there. Our current registrations for winter, we have fifty-three kids signed up for boys' basketball, that's middle school and high school combined. For girls, we have twenty-three. Nine of those are high school, so the middle school registrations is a little bit bigger right now. For cheer, we have four. Indoor track, five. The swim co-op with Grafton, we have two, and so far, no one registered for the ice hockey co-op with Bellingham. I have monthly open hours for parents to just address any questions or concerns regarding athletics, so that's the last Monday of every month. So the next one will be November twenty-fifth. They're all located at the library of the high school. And then finally, we have the District Two realignment. So every school in the Dual Valley Conference, including BMR, has submitted intention to join the Central Massachusetts Athletic Conference. This will go into effect next fall. The whole goal is to have more competitive competition, so schools are grouped, like more based on power rankings. So in December, I'll get like a schedule for the fall, and that'll be based on the current power rankings from like this past fall. So hopefully, there's not going to be like all these blowouts and kids are getting discouraged, it's supposed to be more fair. It may involve a little bit more travel, so we're just waiting to see what the December schedule will look like. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Chuck?
The, so what you just said about ranking, power rankings for the following season, based on the previous season, so you get some superstars who graduate, and then the next year, they get placed in a high division, they get smoked, so that can really, doesn't always work out so well. They get smoked, so that can really, doesn't always work out so well.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't think they're just factoring power rankings, but as far as I know from the last AD meeting, the DVC meeting, they said for this coming fall will be based on power rankings. But the goal is like they're factoring school size.
Playoffs for power rankings, but regular season, it could be. You're talking about playoffs or regular season?
The regular season. Yeah, so the whole season, we have power rankings.
I guess it works for, you know, it's just luck.
It's changing who we play.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that answers my question there. The open gym, what about the weight room? Is there any after-school programs, like can you get someone to, you know, with a stipend to, like year, year-round?
Oh, yeah.
After school, you know, they're out of there at 3:30?
I can look into it. I'm sure in the meantime, I could get someone just to volunteer to man the weight room. Either myself when there's not open gym or one of the coaches I'm sure would be happy to. As long as it's open to every single athlete, it can't be sports specific because that breaks some MIA rules. But as long as it's open to every student at the school, there's no issue with that. I can definitely look into that.
Yeah, I, you know, with other schools, like football, if you have football players and they don't do a winter sport, they have, they can hit the weight room.
Yeah.
Any athlete that's, or any student really, that just wants to exercise and work out. So I think our gym, our facilities need to be more available to our students.
Yeah, I agree. At the school I was at before, we had a weightlifting program for students out of season, so I can definitely like take some ideas from that. The only issue is we want to make sure like students, either someone's there that's properly trained to watch their form so they're not getting injured or like they all need to take a course or get some instruction on how to properly lift. So that way, there's not like all these injuries happening to students who maybe haven't been instructed to lift before.
So I think it's, it's not practical to think that you can be everywhere and sometimes you can't, have to take a day off or something and then to have it affect a plan. You know, I think you should have a group of volunteers on call or, you know, that you use on a regular basis. And, you know, we have certain parents that are, you know, they might be schoolteachers, so they're available right after school to show up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not only, so, you know, we have the gym for boys, you know, one day a week for basketball. So, you know, why can't we increase that for the next three weeks? Why does it only just once a week?
So, we can increase it, we just need to make sure it's like fair for both boys and girls. And I just need to make sure the gym is available.
More coed time, you know, they've got a, you know, they can work things out.
Yeah, I will say it's a lot more than it was last year, at least from what I was told by the coaches. We had.
It's been not good.
Yeah.
History-wise with the facilities, our schools being available to students. So, you know, we want to change it and we want to change it quickly. We don't want to wait any longer.
Yeah.
Okay, and then boys basketball, freshman basketball, is that on the table?
A freshman team, not for the season, just for an example, like multiple factors, but one is just getting the games alone. So a lot of the schools that we compete with, they're now bringing all their middle schoolers up to the JV team with mid-level waivers, so we are having an extremely hard time just finding middle school games, never mind finding freshman games. I've talked to the coaches so far and we're planning to get as many kids involved, even if they're cut, at least in the practice portion. But we can look at numbers. I've been compiling numbers and registration for basketball to see if it's possible.
53 boys signed up?
Yep.
So they, they take 15 on a team.
Yep.
So that's 45, it's pretty close to hand. I, I don't know what the groups are in, like do we have a lot of kids that are freshmen? You know, are these kids not gonna make the team because, you know, we only have?
Yeah, the question is the eighth graders and I'm communicating with MIA. I'm waiting for them to come back and say, hey, if eighth graders can't make the JV or varsity team, can they join the middle school team? I'm waiting for confirmation on email, just so like we all know the rule. So I haven't told any of the students or the coaches one way or the other yet until I get a response. But, yeah, there's a significant number of kids. It's just even if we had that 13, trying to find teams would be very difficult.
Yeah, so, you know, there, there are a lot of freshman teams out there, so. I, I think they, you can find the games.
I, yeah.
It might be difficult, but they're out there.
And offseason?
It's hard at this point, you know, with arbiter and scheduling referees and.
Yeah, and this point usually are, like I'm going to be making the fall schedule in December, so it's like, it's almost a whole year in advance. I can definitely look into the whole list of schools that has freshman teams, like we have databases like that, and see how far, how far away they are, if they already have planned games with other schools, things like that, and to see just how feasible it is for next year.
On the note of wanting to get all of the kids involved though, registration stays open until the 6th. So if there are cuts, there's no tryout for indoor track, right?
Correct, and.
So anyone who's still looking to do winter sport.
Yeah, and a couple of things. So even once that's closed, if a student comes up to me and wants to switch sports, that's fine. I can quickly open it, I can switch them myself. Another piece I'm trying to implement, that I'm just working out details still, is having an intramurals program. So it's going to be shorter, they're gonna be like month-long seasons, but those will be sports that are gonna be cheaper user fee, cheaper user fees, and it's meant to be more inclusive. So as long as we have enough students to form teams, it could be like an unlimited amount of students involved in the intramural program.
Track, last year, our school lent Hope Dale some high jump mats.
Okay.
So they have our high jump, our old, so we have a brand-new setup. It's out in the containers at the high school. But we should, I don't know if we have room in the school to put the mats and so the kids for the winter track can practice high jumping.
I'm also working with North.
It's an event.
Yeah, absolutely. And I want every kid who wants to do a field event to be able to practice it. I'm communicating with Northbridge High School. Most of our indoor meets are at Northbridge High School, except for our championship. So I reached out to them to see if we can use their track facility at least once a week and they're gonna get back to me and see if that's a possibility. So that will help because they'll have jump pits, they'll have other things that we can use.
So they don't have a, I don't think they have long jump indoor pits, just a.
At Northbridge?
At Northbridge. So I, do we have room like in the cafeteria or the all-purpose room to put the high jump mats? Is the cafeteria like totally packed? So the cafeteria is nice because of the ceiling height and, you know.
Even the gym, we could figure out space in the gym, you know, like there has to be.
Those overhead storage spaces, you could put the mats in there where they easily can be pulled out.
Yeah, I don't think there's an issue with storage of the mats.
So we gotta get it back from Hope Dale.
Yeah, I'll make a note of that, thank you. I was not aware of that.
Yeah, I've been trying to get those back for over a year.
I, yeah, they're in our league, so I see the athletic director all the time, so.
Yeah.
My conductor.
That's all the questions I have. Anyone else have any questions?
Just the open gym for basketball, that's for the kids on the team?
Anyone.
Or it's open gym for anyone?
Yeah, open to anyone, anyone who's like considering basketball and just wants to try out. Like we had a middle school girl come on Tuesday, never played basketball in her life, and Izzy was teaching her how to shoot the whole time. So, yeah, it's open to anyone. We just require a physical because I don't want to be liable for anything, so everyone has to have a physical either on file or they have to bring me a paper copy of their physical.
The physical, don't they need a physical to be in school?
They do, but athletics, it's 13 months. I don't know how often the school updates it, but I need to have a record that it's within the 13-month period.
It's not every year, we have the kids.
We do, the nurse gets a copy of them. They should be able to share, but.
But these kids.
The kids like they don't know. But in order to be in school, it has to be.
Well, I think only requires it certain years.
Yes, and we don't, we don't get them from everybody.
I feel like I always put it in.
The nurse does collaborate with me, so if I'm like, hey, this parent said she gave to the nurse, I can give her a list of names and she'll look through and she's pretty quick about getting back. But I can't give her 250 names for like the entire registration, but she is pretty good about looking up specific ones.
There's a place, the right-on registration, where you just click to attach the physical, so it's.
But for open gym, you wouldn't do that, would you?
You could, because if you're considering registering anyway for basketball, the goal is this will help, so by the time people make the basketball team, it's not like waiting a week for them to get a physical and get cleared.
I will say that did help because my kids got nailed on one of the open gyms and came home and was like, Mom, you didn't upload. I was like, all right.
Now they're good. Yeah, we have a check-in process, yeah.
That's good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Darlene. Just a quick update on our vacancies. The committee and the community apprised that where things are. At Millville Elementary, we still are recruiting for one special education teacher, one instructional assistant, and the RBT. We've gone through, just so the committee knows, we have gone through rounds of interviews. We've hosted people for the day to come see the school, to spend time in the classroom. And for one reason or another, the candidates haven't worked out or they've withdrawn for different, you know, for various reasons. So we will continue our efforts there. The middle school has one reading specialist. Vacancy's still open, position's still open. Currently, Esther Cody's been filling that position, which is, she's done great work with our students who need that level of support. We did have a finalist in place for January and we're waiting to hear back from that individual. So we'll see, hopefully that gets filled. And we have one special education position at the middle school. For the high school, we have only the instructional assistant, the IA, to assist with the behaviors. That was, we had talked about that, I think at the last meeting. And we interviewed a candidate this week, so we're waiting to find out about next steps with her. And then unfortunately, in Jill's office, there is an admin assistant. Jackie Diogo's position is now vacant. I may have taken her for my position. So Jill has been, Jill has interviews tomorrow for that vacancy. But that's it for vacancies.
Okay, thank you very much. FY26 budget update.
Yes, so we had, and Joe will, I'm sure, get into this a little bit, but we had our budget kickoff a few weeks ago and with all of our class center managers and went through. Joe did a great job going through the FY26 budget process and sharing the timeline, the school committee approved timeline. All of the class centers have to submit their draft budgets to Joe and I by the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, so that Joe and I can review all of that information over the holiday and then have one-on-one meetings with each of the class center managers the week of December 2nd to have our first discussion prepared for the next school committee meeting on December 12th. So we are right on, right on schedule with that. Joe, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Nope, they, all the class center, the principals and departments have, have their schedules. There's a layout I provided to them, specific to what they need to fill out, not to provide different versions of their budgets. I wanted to keep it all pretty systematic. And the salary and benefits piece of it will fall on my department, which I'm doing within the system itself to generate the projection for those costs.
So the process is well underway. So lots, lots to come in the upcoming months on that. MCAS, a couple of items. I am sure that all of you have heard that the ballot question to remove the requirement of passing the MCAS from the state-required competency determination has passed. So effective immediately, there's no longer a graduation requirement for MCAS. So that is, that is in play now. So we are waiting to hear what the implications are going to be on that, if there's anything that, you know, we have kids that are, that retested last week. So we are waiting to get guidance from the Department of Education on next steps there and to see if the Board of Education takes action. I don't know what their legal purview is to do that. The voters, you know, spoke and, but the Board of Education, I think it's pursuing their options. So from a state perspective, we are now in the bottom three states in the country as far as state-level graduation requirements. We're behind Alabama and Mississippi, and then it's Massachusetts for state-level requirements for graduation. So there's that piece of information.
Where were we?
We were up in, we were up in the top tier of states as far as requirements. We were one of the few states that actually had a state standardized assessment. That was, Regents is in New York, Connecticut, I'm not sure what the name of their requirement is, but there were a few states that had requirements. We do not have that anymore.
So with the repeal of the MCAS, it's district requirement.
Only, yep.
But districts all have a graduation requirement that they would have to fall back on without.
Well, they're different.
So it's just.
The, the whole idea behind having that was to have a consistent measure, right? Because so much of education in Massachusetts is local, it's all locally driven, that at least this was one standard benchmark that made sure that every high school student essentially got over this hurdle.
Now have hundreds of different.
Yes, yeah. So there are districts that didn't do mass core. We did, we have mass core as our requirement, but you didn't have to.
So what is Desi's requirement if it's, if it isn't mass core?
It's not a requirement from Desi. All those decisions, it was a recommendation. Those decisions were all made locally. The school, the school committee could decide they don't want to do that, you want to do something else. The only requirement from the state was the MCAS.
So it could be a very minimal requirement in some districts and then.
Yep.
A very upper high level.
A much more rigorous requirement, yeah. So there's a lot of strength in local control, but there's, it also, it just, it creates a lot of variability. So at a policy, future policy subcommittee meeting, we'll be having some discussions, at least just reviewing our graduation requirements and making sure that they, you know, still meet the needs of what we're looking to do. If we're looking to do something different, what might that different be? But we'll have some discussions to see where the policy subcommittee wants to go with that over the next couple of months. And then underneath the topic of MCAS, the state, it is in your packet. The state now has a required grade eight civics test. They piloted it last year, we did pilot it here. We had a small group of students engage in that. But now all of our students will be taking it in the spring and we have our testing window that the state has provided to us. So there'll be more information on that, but just wanted to make sure that you had the update.
Will like grade 10 still be, it'll still be the same testing schedule?
Yes.
Not to kind of point out the downside without it being a graduation requirement, but what now pushes some of our students to want to do well on this test?
Right.
Abigail Adams Scholarship.
Yeah, but that's really, that's a.
That is still in place, the Abigail, I'm glad you, thank you for mentioning that, Erin. That is still in place, the Abigail John Adams Scholarship.
That's huge for some kids for the state schools.
Isn't it just the tuition?
Yes, I think it ends up being like 19.
It's still part of their academic portfolio, though, when it's gonna go in their records.
It does, it goes into their records.
So if they're applying for colleges, it's something there to, so it means something.
Yeah, in eighth grade, it meant something and it wasn't that they had, they had to pass to go to high school. So why would 10th grade be taken any less serious from our kids than, than all of third through eighth?
I think Carrie's right, but.
Yeah.
I do.
But I thought it was worded that there'd be an alternate, if you failed it, there's another, you have to do something else. Like you have to pass something.
There was, so that's gone as well. So, yep. So there used to be essentially a plan, like an action plan, that had to go in place for the student to make sure they got the intervention and support. They needed to pass the requirement. So that's not, that is no longer, I mean, that doesn't mean you, again, that doesn't mean that we can't do, like we can't set provisions that we want to locally. But that's, those action plans are no longer necessary, because it's no longer necessary to pass the exam.
We never talked about it locally here, but MASC recommended a yes vote, so.
And MASSS recommended a no vote.
The Mass Association of School Committees.
To eliminate the requirement, yeah. And the Superintendent Association voted, their recommendation was to vote no, to make sure to keep the requirement and outlined all of their positions, of which I agreed with, by the way. It's okay. So at the policy subcommittee meeting, I'm sure Tara, Matt and Erin, we will have a lively conversation around what we want to see for any, you know, requirements around graduation, if, if, if any changes, I don't know.
There was a point in educational history in Massachusetts where MCAS was not the standard to graduate. You know, and we were, at that point, Massachusetts was still a top-tier state for education.
That's not picking away from equality.
Why we can't find something within the district or.
Sure, yeah.
That some district, you know, I'm sure has some, some sort of standard already in place or ready to go.
I actually.
I don't see it being that big of an issue.
I think, I think it could create an opportunity for us to do something innovative and creative.
We started heading in that direction, in my opinion, uh, when we eliminated final exams. We were supposed to have this nice project, you know, I'm not going to call it a capstone, but that is what it's called in the later years. And, you know, so I think there's plenty of opportunity, um, for an individual students to present, you know, at their level and, and we can go from there.
So that, that, what you're referring to is a requirement in Rhode Island. Each, each student has to do an individual capstone and present it to a panel of educators.
It's also a college level.
Yeah, I think there's an opportunity.
I think there's a lot of opportunity for accountability on multiple levels in the educational system now. MCAS, I don't know, was always held, you know, students were held to the standard, um, but not everybody was. So I think this is an opportunity to kind of correct that missing piece in our system.
Yeah, I look forward to further discussion on that for sure.
Got a rap on the superintendent's report?
I think so, I'm good.
We'll move on, there's the superintendent, we're going to move on to the business office. Oh, Jill. Okay. I didn't want to, it was, I didn't want to. Moving on to the business office, Joe.
I will go through this quickly. You have that in your packet, the personnel changes, it just, uh, outlines the seven appointments and five resignations that have taken place, that just to be placed on file. Um, moving on to the expenditure report, I don't have, the, I don't have any concerns about the forecast that we have for the year. I did want to point out one change that was made to this report. I know every month I come to you, there's a change in this report, but hopefully now with the adjustments I've made, we're pretty much set in how this will be presented. On page two, under benefits, you're now going to see for health, dental, life insurance, you're going to see an active and a retiree line. The retiree costs are broken out, um, Desi requires a different function code for all those costs, so I just felt it would, it's prudent to see what we're spending on our retirees for the district also. Um, going all the way down, I don't see a big change in the forecasted ending for the year, we're staying pretty steady to what my projections been from the beginning, um, and I don't see that changing any relevantly right now. Was there any questions on this report? Okay. Uh, the next piece is the budget transfers for approval. That I have provided to you again, all, all the highlighted accounts are transfers, uh, the transfers that had an effect between, changing between function codes. Um, everything else stayed within a function code, it might have just been location or object that have changed. Ninety-nine point nine percent of these are related to the need to align to the Desi function code requirements.
Any question on the budget, uh, transfer code approvals? I'll take a motion to approve. Motion made by Tara.
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any, uh, comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, the next one is an update on some, um, other green energy projects that we've had and looking into. Uh, still working with Energy Conservation and Chris Collins, the rep there, he brings forward any opportunities there are for us to utilize any, uh, grant or incentive fundings for green energy. And one of those was the electric vehicle charging stations. Um, he came out with his group to take a look at our schools, to see where, which schools would be eligible. In the charging stations, there is a, the, um, public access charging program. There's a grant of up to $50,000 per station for installation of, you know, the full gamut of setup installation and, um, and supply and everything. Initially, when he brought this forward, he said usually that $50,000 covers 100% of the cost, it'd be no cost to the district. Now he's come back and there is a slight cost to each location, uh, for, uh, the project. One thing you will notice though, that Millville is not, we didn't put Millville as eligible on the project because of the grading that's involved. It, they, they have to meet ADA compliance and it would have been astronomical on cost to make it ADA compliant, so that was left off, Millville Elementary School. But the middle school to put in these level two charging stations, which by the way, the level two are the, they're not the rapid charging stations. Um, those rapid ones in an hour or two, you're fully charged, these ones take three or four hours, I guess. Uh, we didn't feel like it was prudent to have rapid charging stations put in there, we don't want people swinging in to charge up their car and then taking off. It's more for convenience for our staff and visitors.
You gotta put a credit card in there or something?
A what?
You, you pay for that electricity.
From what I, from what I understand, there's an app that we can designate that, we could say during these hours of operation, there is no charge. But then later in the day, you could say you're going to pay X amount of dollars, I don't know how, exactly how that works. Or we could charge per, per hour or per minute or whatever it is.
So you're saying during the school out day, you would free charging, is that?
No, I'd say, yeah, we could do free, whatever the school.
I don't think we should have free charges.
What's that?
I don't think it should be free.
Well, that, and that's fine, I'm just, we have the op, the option.
I have a question, did we look into, um, it's about the charging stations, did we look, did we get any vague numbers, a survey or anything on how many employees or students would actually be utilizing this?
Would it be utilized, like in front of our town hall, we've got a few there, I can never see anything, anyone.
Oh, really, yeah. No, we did not look into that, I don't know how many, I know of one electric vehicle.
I'm just, I'm just, if, if it's going to be a cost, I'm just curious.
It's grant money, it's not something.
But is the grant covering all of it?
Well, there is, there is, no, we can't use any credits, because it's not, it wouldn't be part of the onbo, on billing credits that we have. I, I tried, I went back and forth with him constantly saying, it, it's the same type of scent, it's a green energy. You can't, wouldn't be eligible for the onboard credits that we have. And it turns out, if you look at page two of the packet I have you, I gave you, it lists the total cost they come up with for installing these stations, then less the grant money, what the district cost would be. And it turns out there's about, just under $29,000 of cost to the district.
I'd like to see numbers on who would be utilizing it, if, if it's going to be a cost like that, no?
We're spending almost, uh, $29,000.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something? No matter how much, I'd love to see us have some charging stations, um, and I'm not going to speak for Scott, but I'm going to think that for $28,000, he could probably go around and spend $28,000 like that and try to help our buildings, that we're trying to keep the high school up with Band-Aids right now for the next several years. So, I mean, I just, do we really need charging stations right now when we're, when we're in dire straits? With, I, I was just looking at his report before I was, before I came here, and here's several things here. Going to need this, going to need that, going to need this, going to need that. I just don't know how we can go forward spending 28 and a half thousand dollars on charging stations at this point, that's just the way I feel.
So when we met, um, the subcommittee with Joe, um, yesterday, we talked about this, Joe explained, it was just meant, brought to us because there is a grant program available. We talked about seeing this number that there would be a cost to the districts and based on that, I want to make a motion to not move forward with this grant.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion made by Tara, let me just, uh, not to approve, uh, the EV charging station, seconded by Chuck. Any further discussion?
I just want to point out, I mean, that it is good to know the money's available.
Yes.
My, my question was going to be, why is it so different at each location versus, um, you know, and, and why was it more than what he had originally?
That's a good question, he has not returned my call on that yet, I guess, because I also question why is there even a charging complex? Because it's under $50,000, why isn't it fully funded?
Oh.
You know what I mean, there's $6,000 there, he told me we have a $50,000 grant, yet there's $6,000.
$50,000 per location, but they're only applying $29,000.
So I, I don't have.
So I, I feel we still need answers to those questions before we turn down something completely. Like, do we have to make a motion on any of this tonight? It was just information, I thought.
No, we're not under any, not like the, um, the lighting upgrades, we're not under really a time constraint for this. So it's not like we have to get this done by a certain time. And actually, there was another company that reached out to Scott that has, uh, they all come back to you and tell you, we'll put them in for free, right? But we'll, we're going to try to set up a meeting with that company and see if they truly will come in and do it for free. If there's no cost, then it wouldn't be.
With that being said, why would we say no to 50,000, if something, if $50,000 is going to cover one? All right, we don't have to do all three, but why wouldn't we just start with one if based on needs?
Numbers that I said, I also have one more follow-up question, I'm sorry.
Is there still discussion?
Okay, so that 28 cost is just for the installation, what is the estimated cost for repairs and maintenance on top of that?
Valid question.
But if we, if it is something we could ca, collect revenue from, like Chuck said, like those are answers we don't have.
Yeah.
And I don't, that's, I want to point out.
And if, and if we were to collect the revenue from, which would be great, offset the cost of electricity, but that electricity cost would still be covered under our on, our net metering credits that we have. Because that would be on the bill, because it's an electrical charge. But you're right, I don't know the answer to, uh.
Do we know the dates that this grant is open?
Yeah, I don't believe there's any deadline, he did not say that this grant expires, this is like the next generation of the pushing these EV, you know, green energy, and I, I think at some point in time.
January 20th.
January 20th? Okay, you're right, okay.
This would be, you could be right there.
If I was a betting man.
Do things that make sense. Probably required at like a, a new school project, you know.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure.
I just, I think I would make a motion to table it until we have more information and not decline a $50,000. If, if it could be covered 100%, and we don't have that answer.
That's what we're trying to find, is something that's not going to be any cost to the district, that would be a no-brainer.
I don't know about the longevity and the maintenance.
Make a motion to table the.
Yes, numbers, longevity and maintenance.
They have a motion on the floor already.
So we have a motion and second on the floor, um, with that, um, is this one company, is this just one company giving us a price on this?
Yes, this is just going through Energy Conservation, who, who's helping us with all our LED stuff, yes.
Because it seem, it does seem, it does seem high, that it would be more, if we're getting 50 grand and it's another, uh, I guess it was the diff, um, the middle school is six, and it's the same amount of chi, it's.
It is, but.
One charging station at each.
There's, there's location, they have to run lines to the electric, it all depends on the grading that's needed. So I could, I, I, I can see how it could be a different cost for each location depending on where it's being placed and what's needed in that location.
As a grant per location?
Yeah, $50,000 per installation.
I have it on special.
With the exception of the complex, which is 29,000, 30,000.
That's right.
He's waiting on an answer, uh, why, sorry.
Why, why wasn't that one funded 100% is my question to him, why are they charging us $6,000?
Maybe it's a typo, maybe we need to wait for the answer.
And they've, they've had mistakes, they've, I've had to correct a few things with the LED lighting, but he has not gotten back to me on that yet.
Are these, um, I'm sorry, are these, are these figures based on doing three schools? Like if, if we were to say, oh, we just want to do a middle school, is that number that is on this page going to change?
He didn't, he didn't present it that way.
Like, is it like a twofer, okay, we'll take a little off.
That's the case, and I think it can come down 28 grand in total.
Yeah, competition and.
Yeah, because we want to do the complex for 35, 8, but we want to use 50,000.
And we want the refund.
Okay, so.
Take that extra and put it towards the high school.
Then the complex, like what if we are giving it up?
Right, right, right.
Same thing with high school, looks like it's, looks like it's on top of it, I don't know where it is.
Depending on the high school plan.
Moving it.
Well, yeah, there, obviously we'd have to be able to move the equipment to wherever the new construction would be, that's, could be five years out, so.
Yeah, for another 50 grand.
By then it'll probably be some kind of.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, I want to know.
But I mean, the superintendent makes a good point, at some point in time, now, there's a push for these green energy. At some point in time, the feds and the, the electric companies, they're not going to be providing this type of support for it, so. I mean, at some point, I don't know if it'll be January 20th.
The funds for this come up from consumers, right? Uh, we pay taxes, the, so that money is, is really going to be there, I think.
I would, I would hope so, I hope so.
Your, if you look at your electric bill, you know, I know I pay like $35, $40 a month, every month, every, for year, every year. So my own house, I, I'm, I, I try to conserve, but, you know, my, for the mass save, for the energy efficiency, you know, it's $30, $35, just my, my bill is 300 to 500, right? But I'm saying, there's a, the tat, they, it's a perpetual fund for this energy efficiency, where Massachusetts has that set up. I don't think it's, like, we're in danger of, there'll be something, some other program until.
If they want to force it, there'll be something.
Full disclosure, I do not drive an electric vehicle.
Some people do.
Just presenting the information.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, so there's a motion, uh, by Tara, seconded by Chuck on the floor. If we want to table this until we get further information, Tara would just need to withdraw her motion and Chuck would withdraw his second, is that what we want to do?
No.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, not to approve the EV charging stations.
As presented.
As presented, all those favor, signify.
Can I ask a question before you do the vote?
A little bit more discussion, so this is not the end of the deal, I'm not going to give it to you.
So if the deal were to come back later.
Joe can bring this back up next meeting.
That's what I want to know.
I would just present it differently.
Okay, so.
Nice work, Joe.
A motion and second. Um, uh, sorry, there's a motion and a second not to accept EV charging stations as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Seven to one. The motion passes. With that being said, Joe, feel free to present us with a.
I will continue to do my research, thank you.
And thank you for not, because that just made it that much easier.
Exactly, I'm like, whatever, I can come back up with it.
Moving on to the.
Oh God, more electricity. Update on APM lighting project.
So actually, it's a lighting project for the whole district, not just, um, middle school. Uh, please do announce that the lighting project is complete, I believe, right Scott, I think it was 100% now. Um, and it, it's done, it looks great actually, when we go outside, I'll take a look again. But, um, the phase one lighting project of the 115,000 or just under 160,000, it's already been paid through the on, on bill credits that we had, so that's done. And then over the next couple of months, we'll be watching to see the next, this, this, these three phase two exterior lighting in the Millville Elementary School. Make sure those credits get on the bills, I've got the, um, it's called the Schedule Z, where you can allocate the credits to different, uh, accounts. I'm going to realign some of those credits to make sure there's plenty on those accounts to cover these costs and we'll be good to go. So that, that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Lights look great.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see what the, um, how the usage comes down.
Look really nice, driving up there.
Yeah, it does, it does, makes a big difference. Yeah, it was nice, nice to see things. Yeah, it's more a wider light. It's, well, you can see, which is nice.
And they're on.
Right.
They're all on, they're all working, yeah.
Yeah, that was lit today, that was doo. I never noticed that before.
I didn't want to say metal highlight.
Alright, we're going to move on. Update on BMA football field lighting.
We're just taking, see if we could find some. Just to get some kind of a projected cost of what it would take to put that, the football field lights up and into that area.
It can't, it can't hurt to look. I mean, we don't have to wait necessarily for a building project to do, so we, at least we're getting some preliminary information that.
Give us an idea.
That would include bringing power up there.
Yes.
It's not existing power.
So the scoreboard.
Oh, yeah, all of it.
So it's actually for BMR field, because that means the girls' field hockey and all the other teams too that play up there.
Yeah, all the sports could do night games and it'd be nice.
And scoreboard.
It would just be the beginning of what else could be done up there.
Sure. I don't know if you could have a night meet.
We talked about bleachers, all that stuff, but that's not something.
There's no electricity and that's the problem.
So you've seen some, you think the track will, would stay in the spot it's in?
I think so.
That's something that's not going to move.
No, and I think like, if, some of the proposals, these are like, the proposals we got were so super preliminary, right? But in all of them, the track was in the same place on every, and I feel like that's such a landmark for us. You know, you go by and it's right there. You can't, you can't miss it, the kids on the field and the scoreboard and all of that, like, it's just such a, like a nostalgic piece of.
Permanent fixture.
Yeah, right.
The community.
So I wouldn't imagine that would move.
That's what some proposals talk about, it being like a community spot right there and how you see it.
The building will move, but the track won't.
I don't think you could, even if you moved the track, you'd have to keep that structure, the hill there, because of stormwater and management and stuff.
And we have the new handicaps.
Yeah. Can't hurt the check.
No.
That's it.
Yeah, the actual whole property is, kind of has a mope around it other than the street as well.
Right, yeah. Being like a community spot right there and how you see it.
The building will move, but the track won't.
I don't think you could, even if you moved the track, you'd have to keep that structure, the hill there, because of stormwater and management and stuff.
And we have the new handicaps.
Yeah. Can't hurt the check.
No.
That's it.
Yeah, the actual whole property is, kind of has a mope around it other than the street as well.
Right, yeah. The conversation will go better than the EV chargers, I promise.
You can put EV chargers near the footballs and they could charge the lights.
Right.
They, that was one thing. They wanted to bring in a fast charger because they thought, we have to bring power into the, into the field.
Yeah.
He said, we might be able to put in these Level Three chargers, get some kind of incentive from National Grid for that, and then tie off of that.
Yeah.
But then they found out, they're getting $5,000 a check, a payment, for every charger they put in. It's okay, do we really need the charger there? We don't need the charger, and he's telling me.
We can use the 50 grand.
It obviously did.
Capitalism, that it's fast.
I told him to put it all together. Let's see, if it truly does bring the cost down, then we could look at that, but if it's going to be more cost, doesn't make sense.
That's crazy. We'll revisit it.
Moving on to facilities report.
Okay, so as you know, with the hot and cold days, you know, one day it's hot, next day it's cold. We turned on the heat at the high school one day, shut it off, next morning came in, found the circulator pump leaking. This past weekend, I shut the circulator pump off again, hasn't leaked since. However, we are getting close to having a rebuild, just in case. So industrial burner did come out on Tuesday and will provide us a quote. B107 had a leak above the ceiling tiles. We had, already had it, you know, looked at and made the arrangements to have it done on November 11th while nobody was in the building. We could shut the water off to the whole building if we had to. Fortunately, we didn't have to, but, so that has been repaired. Broken window that has been repaired on Tuesday, October 29th, that was the one on the second floor. Later got another broken window on the first floor on B111. Franklin glass came out on November 11th as well and installed the new window pane. Geothermal temperature controls came out on November 11th as well to work on the air makeup system in the kitchen. What happens, we turn the hood on, exhaust the air, no fresh air was coming out. So they came in, replaced the actuator on November 11th as well, and then found out that there's a relay that isn't. So the way the actuator works is there's air supplied to it from our compressor, and it opens it up. So it opens up the outside dampers. Now, it wasn't closing, so the dampers were staying open. So now they need to come in and change the relay, and they're going to wire it to the switch so that it'll turn on and off with, when they turn the hood on. So they'll be coming back next week to do that. The middle school, I was hoping to have the pressure gauges changed on PD Day, however, the vendor did not receive all the parts. So that will be something that's scheduled probably during the winter break, holiday break. Two domestic hot water mixing valves that we talked about earlier, those pots just came in. So I'll be looking to do that maybe this weekend or over the Thanksgiving break. As Joe said, Phase Two of the lighting has been done. I noticed that they did miss the Fed Hottnet sign down at the end of the road, so I called them up and they came back and they changed them out, which was excellent, so. That's nice and bright now as well. There you go. It's really bright. Our van paving came out on PD Day. They're originally supposed to come with, fix one storm drain. I later found another storm drain that was sinking in, so I had them fix that one at the same time, as well as repair some of the big potholes that we had developing along the curbs. One out front by the crosswalk, which was a hazard. If somebody stepped off the sidewalk, they could have rolled their ankle, so. We got that done on PD Day as well. The boiler number two has developed a leak with the O-ring. Again, industrial burner was out here on Tuesday. They'll be providing us with a quote for that as well. As you know, during the fire drill, the, it was discovered that some of the doors weren't closing. I did receive one quote from Energy Electric. I'm just waiting on another one from Precision Alarm. Several in emergency lights and their batteries have been replaced. He's also, he's got a couple more of the exit signs that aren't lighting up, and he's working on those and that should be done this week as well. Fire rated window, we ordered that from Granger. It came in. Nice wooden box, all boxed up, nice and neat. However, opened it up, the window shattered, so. We're waiting on them to replace that. Then I'll install that. They're also asking for games to be painted on the asphalt, cup scotch, four squares, and some other games. I'm going to paint those myself, so. They also want some lines painted to line up for recess when they come in, so. That'll get done hopefully this week. I'm meeting with Dr. Laporte and Christina to see exactly where they want them. So, yeah, that'll get addressed. Millville, fire pump passed the quarterly inspection last week. That went good. Phase Two of the LED lighting project is going to be completed tomorrow. There's four lights they got to come back and do in the boys' and girls' locker room.
Oh, we're not 100%.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I misreported. I thought we were 100% done.
Oh, well, sorry. It's only four. And. Let's see. Oh, the heating system continues to be a problem. Siemens was out today and they discovered that the back network licensing has expired. So they're sending us a quote to renew the licensing for that. Should receive that today or tomorrow. I checked my email, I still haven't received it yet, but. And that should address that issue. Might as well I have.
Who's breaking all the windows?
Yeah, are they the same?
I know the one was received broken both.
So a teacher shut one and somehow it wasn't lined up right or whatever and it broke. It's one of the ones you can open and close. The one on the second floor, we don't, no idea how that one broke. There was a hole in it, but we couldn't find anything on the inside.
There's another question. Maybe this is more for, in a general question is, I know we spoke about it when we first, you know, discussed grade reconfiguration and moving some of the younger guys here. What do we, do we have a plan around, is there anything that we can do for playground equipment here? I know we talked about it and it's, we have, you know, nine and 10-year-olds here that really should have playground equipment. We should probably start talking about that.
Yeah. We have installed basketball hoops in the back over here and they got the, that other game out there on the island.
Gaga ball.
Yeah.
Gaga ball. That's fun. Yeah. I, I think if we're going to have elementary level kids, which fourth graders are still elementary level kids, right? We should have elementary level accessories for them.
What do other middle schools that brought their lower grades in have? I, I would guess that would be my question.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying we should have like, you know, you know, baby things here and.
No, because even at, at the complex, they had a separate, they had a more of like a physical fitness.
A more mature playground.
Yeah.
And then the, yeah.
Little ones on the other side of the building.
Yeah, of course, yeah, yeah.
There's a little shed out here that's housing frisbees and footballs.
Oh, I know they, I know they have, they have games and everything. I'm just talking about the law, just kind of, maybe we have that discussion going forward. I know we talked about putting it in the front and I don't know if we have money in the budget, but.
Well, we just saved $28,000 on charging stations.
Let's do it. We put electric, an electric.
Any playground.
Maybe we could get some kind of.
Green energy playgrounds.
LED lighting.
The kids ride on a bike and.
50 years from now, mark my words, 50 years from now, when none of us are here, there is going to be a superintendent in the school committee sitting here saying, "I can't believe that they never put in the charging stations. There was all this government money to do it," right? Just like we do with the invested stuff, and they're like, mark my words, we're all going to be rolling over in our graves.
I guarantee it. That's not going to be the issue that makes me roll over in my grave. Aaron.
I don't, I just wanted to ask. Because it is unfortunately right around the corner, snow. And maybe we talked about this when we reduced our custodians, but what is the plan for the MES building? For like sidewalk cleanup before building opening? We do have, we do have a lot of staff there, so just curious.
Yeah.
We lost three last year, reduced, and then. That, and that's their morning, you know, they come in early, they take care of their own buildings, but in the morning, correct me if I'm wrong, we only have one in each building in the mornings and then two at night in each building?
2.5 at night.
Okay. So what is the plan for the mornings after a snowstorm for MES or for help for the other guys?
So same as last year. If it's like a weekend storm or something, I'll send all the guys over there.
Once their buildings are cleared.
Once their buildings are cleared. Or if it's a weekday, either myself or the van driver will go there and show over the main entrance right away. And then, once I'm done plowing and get everything else done, I'll go back there and I, I did the other walkways.
I know the guy who plows up there does a spectacular job and gets on the sidewalk.
He does.
Well, that would be one.
Helps out the van driver.
He does. I know personally. Sometimes he blows a tire out doing that, but he still do it.
Yeah, I have a question. I don't know if it's for Scott or for Jason. But I think we had mentioned it in a previous meeting. The, we're going to need gym space for basketball season. What's the deal with using Millville?
It's available.
Yeah, we're using Millville.
It's available? Because I know we were talking about the custodial staff.
We'll, we'll deal with that.
Um, no, I was talking about custodial staff, like, can the coaches use Millville?
Yes.
So, okay.
Admittedly, we try to use the other locations first.
Yeah.
I mean, admittedly, we do try to do that, but when the overflow happens, Millville will be available to be used.
That gym will be online.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And just for people at home, it's been online.
Oh, yes.
It has been, that's correct.
Yep.
It's in great shape.
Anything else for Scott? Scott, another outstanding presentation. Thank you so much for your time.
My pleasure.
I said to Scott today that we almost went through an entire week where he didn't come in saying, "We have an issue."
I need money.
But the issue came today with the brake line. Almost.
Yeah. So speaking of snow, I did drop off the truck to be serviced and on the way there, one of the brake lines, so. Well, it's, it's at the garage. It's.
Then an oven in the middle of the street.
Correct.
Exactly.
Well, that's why I dropped it off. I want them to go and through it. It's due for inspection sticker, so let's get it done.
We did put a plan in place too, that going forward. We're going to try to do a quarterly routine maintenance on all the vehicles. So we're not hit with these last-minute valve joints are gone or this, at least we'd have some kind of, we can kind of try to stay ahead of it as opposed to in a crisis.
How many vehicles do we have?
What's that?
How many do we have?
How many do we have? Three vans, what, two trucks?
Uh, we have three vans, two plow trucks, and one food service truck, which is brand new, that one, which is brand new. We don't have to worry about that. Although, however, Lynn did pour windshield washer fluid in it and it all came out on the ground, so I crawled under it and found out that the line was never put on the pump underneath.
That'd be a warning to. Is that a transit van? It's a Ford?
It could be.
Yeah, because my, my windshield, my brand-new van, the motor didn't work on the wipers.
Oh, no kidding?
The motor didn't.
On the wipers.
On the wiper motor. Wiper motor or pump motor?
So I got plenty of washer fluid if you want, need more.
That was a minor fix. That was, just crawl under it.
Okay, are we good with Scott?
Facilities requests.
Are you doing those too?
Oh, Joe doesn't, but I'll sit here in case there's questions.
I knew we were good with that.
Thank you for hanging out for three hours.
It's always educational.
Yes, it is.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board on the facility, of the committee on the facilities request?
Well, I have a question on the first one. Game Time Academy is requesting the middle school, 5:30 to 6:30. That's prime basketball practice time for the middle school teams.
This, this group is very flexible. They'll take whatever. And it's only going to be, as, they'll be charged $20 a day, because they're Group Two, but only as they use the facility. It's, it's very, it's just a fun recreational sporting thing that they're going to do with the kids. So they're flexible in location, they're flexible in dates, they're flexible, they just wanted to say in this period of time, we'd like to have access to the facility when it's there, and they understand it's $20 per day.
So there is a note at the bottom and it, I think they agreed their Friday nights are JFK.
Yeah, we did. We actually, you're right, Scott, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. We did let them know it's probably going to be the AFM or JFK that they use more likely than the middle school.
Do we have a custodian on Friday nights?
Yes.
Yeah, they're till 10, right?
JFK, yeah.
Is that also?
JFK, not the AFM.
Both bills. Either are.
What did, what did BMYBL request?
The BIMB, like, uses the.
Uses the.
The gym, Monday through Friday.
Don't think they, I don't think they request the Fridays, Monday through Thursday. I don't believe so. I'll double check on that. But I'm almost positive that's why we told them they could have Friday night.
Okay.
I've been in touch with Jen, so it's.
Is that what you asked, Carrie? What did BMYBL request?
Asked for, yeah, what was their request for JFK, AFM? No, we had already, like, a while ago, we approved their practice times.
You want to just keep going through them and then approve them all or not at once?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So that was Game Time. Next is BMY, BMYSL for Sunday games, travel basketball.
Do you have any questions on that one?
They're willing to pay $5,263.
That's, that's right. The charge per day for 12 days, then the cost of the custodians, which is double time, because it's a Sunday.
Next is express football and cheer practice.
That already happened.
That's the one that Stephanie put out the email.
Tonight, cheer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think she emailed everybody.
Yeah.
Uh, this one was emailed out, so I think it's just, so you have it in your packets.
Oh, okay.
She put email approval on 10/30.
Got you, got you.
Do we have, I'm sorry, do we have a master schedule? I'm just looking at all of the. I'm just looking at all of these and like trying to play it out in my head.
Is it in, is it updated?
It's a Google Calendar.
I know, is it updated?
So if we miss something, I'm just wondering, miss something that double checks it, so there's not a conflict?
Yeah.
Did we not approve the hometown Christmas before we?
I was going to say, is this the same one that we just approved?
That's the one that was waived.
Yeah, now we have to approve it.
Because they're going to be inside.
They were told the gym was not available because bimbles, yeah.
Yeah, she said that either the Hottnet School, the Kennedy Schools, whatever was easier for you, I think is.
Who updates the, who does that?
Jackie will be doing it now, and I believe the athletic director has access to it also.
They're using middle school.
I forget how long ago this was, this was sent to us after one long discussion, but it's in our, if you have Google Calendar.
Yeah.
With your school committee email, I turn it off. But you can go in here and put facilities usage, it was shared to us, and it's orange. It looks, BMYBL is in here.
I'm going to need somebody's help to show me.
It has the beard on there.
I don't know.
The banters.
They just came in.
I know, it feels.
So, and everybody's seen the ones that we've gotten tonight, right? From the BMVPTO and BMYBL.
Yeah, so you need a motion?
A motion to accept all of them.
There we go, we get it.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Tara, any further discussion? Ted, what do you have to add for that?
Emphatically.
There's no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. School committee forum, anybody have anything to add?
Just that, Scott could have bring us all M and Ms at the next meeting?
DMH minutes.
We saw you.
All right, the next school committee meeting is December 12th. Six P M. 12 plus 12 is 24, we're getting there, what do you need MCAS for? Okay, with that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Matt.
Second.
Seconded by Tara.
S.
Oh, S, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.